Um, Mr. Thomas, would you like to give the invocation?
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and um start the May twenty eighth uh two thousand twenty four Board of Supervisors meeting. Thank you all for attending. Uh let the record show that all six supervisors are pleasant uh present. To my far right is Mr. Clay Forehand from the Madison District. To my immediate right is Mr. Floyd Thomas from the Mattapani District. To my immediate left and vice chair is Mrs. Nancy Long from the Port Royal District. To her left is Mr. Jeff Sealy from the Bowling Green District. And to his left is Mr. Reggie Underwood from the Reedy Church District. If I could have everyone stand please for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. To the God of our weary years and the God of our silent tears, it is to you we pray. We pray first of all thanking you for your grace and your many blessings. We ask now that you guide us, direct us to do things right for Caroline County. In the name of Jesus the Christ, I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Alrighty, we are now on to um next point of our agenda, opening board comments. I will start with Mr. Underwood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I wanna say to the board that we did, I have a two constituent meetings last week. One a little contentious, one was some wants. One of the things that we talked about was trash in the community. And I talked to the folks from Second Mile sign and they agreed, maybe we can do a Caroline County Pickup Day. And invite all the churches to participate and make it a a big event on a specific weekend or day. To to make the county look better. Everybody agrees that the county looks, is starting to look horrible and it's uh the local neighborhoods that is where the issues are coming from, down our back roads. You know, you would think it was people trap traveling through, but it's our back roads are really looking uh horrible. So we really need to do something to to help the county um preserve its wonderful nature. It's what looks at, we have a lot of businesses in certain areas, but we just need to give it a little more attention, but I think we could work and get something done there. And secondly, certainly want to thank all of our service members who gave the ultimate sacrifice on Memorial Day. I didn't make it, but I understand it was a very nice ceremony. Like to thank Mr. Sealy for that and all they do um for that. With that, Mr. Chairman, have no more comments.
Um, Mr. Sealy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank all the participants and the folks that um actually helped put together Memorial Day. It was a very, very, probably one of the top two or three um services we've done on the courthouse lawn. Mr. Whiteman, the building official, who is also a retired Marine, was the guest speaker, did a fabulous job. I want to thank Public Works for all they did in getting chairs, cuz it was gonna rain and it wasn't gonna rain and we ended up with a little bit of rain and wiping off chairs, but we did the whole ceremony without any rain. So thanks to everybody who came and and thanks for everybody who helped put it together.
Mrs. Long?
First, I'll take a moment to congratulate all the graduates out there. I hear the ceremony was was good and and wish all them the best as they start their new phase in life. I also attended the Memorial Day service and uh the rain just just didn't appear during that time and it was wonderful. And Mr. Whiteman did us proud, it was a wonderful speech. And for those of you who don't know, Kevin's been with us a long time. He is planning on retiring. So please, if you see him in the next couple of weeks, tell him thank you and wish him good luck in his his more relaxed years. Although knowing Kevin, he'll never relax. Uh he'll find some project to do. Uh and that's all I have this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
I do have a a couple, actually uh I attended the business appreciation uh reception last week and definitely need to say again that we appreciate all the businesses in Caroline that do great things and uh help us with tax revenue and jobs and and all those great things. We couldn't be the county we are without them, so we appreciate that. Uh I sent Mr. Wilson, he's on vacation. All right, I sent Mr. Wilson early last week uh an article about rural opportunity zones that we got from the National Association of Counties. I think that's something the county needs to take advantage of a little more. We probably haven't had a chance to do that. But whatever we can do to pull down federal money to help the county would be a great idea. Um, lastly, when we just, when we have our budget discussions, um we haven't talked about the land use tax rate at all for quite some time. So I think we probably need to talk about that. I think a couple of years ago, I asked the commissioner um how much money that was and it's over a million dollars. And there was another discussion that Mr. Underwood and I had about farmer equipment and and tax reductions for the farmers. And I think we need to figure out how we can help the farmers compete, especially in today's most competitive uh environment. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, uh Mr. Forehand.
Just wanted to um say that I did attend the uh graduation ceremony of the high school and it was outstanding. It was well done. Venue was great. Um, it's the first one I've been to in many years and um look forward to going back in the future. So, well done, schools. Thank you.
So um I'm gonna just kinda reiterate, not much new uh to everything that everyone said. And Mr. Underwood, we we did have one of those countywide pickups in April, April twentieth. Um, Mr. Shible had put it out there. There were several organizations um that were involved around. I think there was hundreds of tr- uh bags of trash that were collected that day. Um, and he has a cookout forum every year, but um if we wanted to do multiple uh times a year, then yeah, then then that would be great. Um, the other thing too is uh as far as business appreciation, that was very nice. That was actually my first time um at that venue and uh it it's beautiful. Gosh, it's a it's a beautiful venue that we have here in Caroline, so I wanna thank everyone who was involved in putting that on. Um, Mr. Sealy and everyone who was involved in putting the Veterans Day or Memorial Day, I'm sorry, ceremony on. Uh, Mr. Whiteman does not come across as a person who is a uh great speechwriter, but that was one of the best speeches I think I've ever heard. Uh, so um it was, it was outstanding. I wish everyone, we had that on tape uh so that everyone could actually uh listen to it cuz it was a very, very, very powerful uh speech that he gave uh yesterday. And then sticking with that topic, um he will be retiring at the end of this week, Mr. Whiteman and um probably one of the most valuable county employees that we've had. And we have a lot of valuable county employees, so I don't wanna say that we don't, but Mr. Whiteman um has a skill set that um has saved the county taxpayer uh I think over a million dollars when we've calculated it um from different projects that he has taken on um taken on himself to to save us, save us tons of money. So um we do wish him, as Mrs. Long said, we do wish him um the best in his future endeavors. All right, that's it for opening board comments. Um amendments to the agenda, do we have any? Seeing or hearing that we have none, I will take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Take a second. We have a motion by Mr. Sealy and seconded by Mr. Thomas. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next up, we have presentations and reports. We have Ms. Caroline Davis, who is to talk to us about York on the Lewis and Clark Expedition.
Do I need to pull this down?
Yep.
Yes.
Is that better? Okay, I have a poster here I want to hold up if somebody will help me. If you'll just, you all may represent, may uh have noticed that this has been around before. And this is a wonderful tool that I have been able to use to teach. And I wish it had been around when I was teaching third and fourth grade, even kindergarten. You get the message here. And that's what I'm gonna talk about a little bit tonight, so if you'll, you could, you don't have to keep holding it. I also want to thank you uh for letting me come tonight and um allowing me to speak because I want to thank you for things like this, first of all, that you have done over the years. The Lewis and Clark brochure, the the map of the county that shows where historic places are. And all of that, as I have been an older retired person, have been important to me. And they've been things that I have been able to look at and look at it a little differently. Now, I've given you each a packet and I just soon you don't follow me in it because I'm not gonna be too long and I'm not gonna stay with it, but if you do, it's okay. The first page there is all about me and most of you know me. You know me so well that you call me Cookie because I grew up here in Caroline County. I am a product of this county. And yet, for many years, I taught here, uh everything from kindergarten on up to being a reading coordinator for two schools and then uh vice pres- principal and then principal at Bowling Green Elementary. So the main reason I did this is because I had trouble with all those years and I was trying to remember, when did I do this and when did I do that? So the first page in your little booklet really tells you who I am, but you all pretty much know me anyway. Uh, the one statement in there is that now that I'm retired, I have um of course continued to work with history because it's been uh a love that I've had all the way from college on down or before. And um working with the Historical Society has been wonderful in in the county as well as working at Port Royal since I've been retired. Um, once, one of the things that really touched me, I think, and the why, the reason I'm here to talk a little bit about York tonight is because a lady came into the museum at Port Royal one day and she saw this poster and she started asking me about him. And I'm thinking, you know, I'm a retired teacher and I've lived here all my life. I really don't know much about him. So her name was Peggy Croson and it's written here, she is with the Virginia Lewis and Clark Legacy Trail. And she wanted to know more about York because she's been tracing this legris- uh legacy of Lewis and Clark. And in today's time, I wanted our children to know more about this man that was with them. So that sort of got me looking around to see what was going on and reading. There are today books like this that I didn't have when I was teaching third grade that could talk about American slave, American hero. And this is a book on uh the man called York. So that led me to two, close to three years of study now and research just on this man and where he came from and and what he did in life. Out of all of this, I have worked with the Legacy Group and I have worked with the state because I felt and others felt that we needed to rep- recognize York a little better in our signage. There is one on the highway, but you can't even slow down to read it. I tried several times. Uh, I have worked and it's very complicated to follow what you have to do and count every letter in every word and every space and not go beyond. So you find lots of information and I did a lot of researching, but I learned a lot. And from all of that, this new sign is located now in the Charlesburg area. And uh it's next to County Line's uh church. And it's there for everybody and I'm hoping people will go and take a look. Uh, it talks about uh York, that he was born in seventeen seventy, we think. And so that's an interesting beginning to know. Now, I've shown you one book, here's another book, The Journey of York. Years ago, they didn't have books like this in the elementary schools. Even teachers that wanted to know, we couldn't find it. Unsung Hero of the Lewis and Clark Expedition. And in many ways, he was. He was so different that he was there. He was there at the right time when they needed someone like him. Someone who uh could venture out, maybe, who could be friendly with the Indians that they met along the way. So many things that it turned out that he could do. Uh, and these authors now are recognizing that. So let me look at my notes a minute and tell you uh what else I wanted to throw in here. Um, we really didn't know very much about uh York, except we knew he was born in Caroline and that's where we started. Uh, we do know that he was owned by William Clark's father, John. And that William Clark grew up with York. They sort of grew up together because he was his personal slave. And they played together and hunted together and learned to swim and do all of those things that uh maybe we hadn't realized that he had done. His father was named York, Old York, they called him, and the son was York. Some people have given him a first name, but I could not find it really documented that uh he was just known as York. Um, he never, let's see, uh I think I mentioned that they did a lot of hunting and that kind of thing. Um, now they were born, uh he was born, both of the men were born, William and uh uh York were born right here in in the Charlesburg area of Caroline County. And it was on a large farm that John Clark owned. So that was seventeen seventy. But by seventeen eighty-five, the family moved west to Kentucky. Now, that was wild new country and uh you find some interesting things as you read about that too. Um, it was along that time that uh, oh, the boys were about fifteen. And you sort of begin to think of them and things that they were into and learning to hunt together and all of that. And then later, about ten years later, William Clark became a lieutenant in the army. And during that time, York was left back at the farm. However, he did come to bring the mail and bring supplies. And uh during that time, he had had a bit of a life of his own and married, so we we heard. Now, all that time, he had just been basically working back on the farm. But in eighteen oh three, when Jefferson decided it was time to do some exploring and figure out a way to get from the east coast to the Pacific. And it just so happened that um Lewis and Clark were the two men that were selected to head up this trip. It was quite a trip, really. And the interesting thing, which I never knew from the early reading as is in history, is that um he took with him his slave. Now, one place they say, uh how did they make, uh why did they take York? And I found several specific things, that he was a trusted man, that he was a hunter, that he was a hard worker. He was very big and very strong and he couldn't really refuse. He had no choice. He did go. But as you read about the trail and all the things that happened, you find many times that his being there really made a difference. In one particular article, I was impressed that um he was at a buffalo hunt and he was the one that brought home two buffalo. And that he took care of the one man in the trip that was sickly. He became like a doctor or two him, things like that that he did that really made a difference uh along the way. Um, he also made friends with the Indians. They seemed to trust uh him, uh York, more so than some of the white men. And then they continued and before we knew it, there they were at the Pacific. Now, it was not an easy journey. And uh, one thing, when they did arrive and and decided to do their fort, this was the time when everybody got to pick and vote. And it's documented that York also was included into this heavy, in the heavy voting and getting the work done there at the fort. So these are some of the things that I've found out about the trip and the fact that um uh I also found that in the, in the newer uh information that there is now a s- a statue of York at at the Lewis and Clark College in Portland, Oregon, which I had never realized. And um, so I think it's a, he is a man that's worthy of the new signage. And I hope that that you will encourage teachers particularly to have a chance to read that and to uh enjoy seeing what can happen and uh help us sort of um bring our children up to date and gr- and parents too of things that have happened for years in Caroline, were all a product of this county. So, thank you. I didn't mean to keep too long, but I wanted you to know, I really think it's, it will be important to children. And we share lots of this in the museum and uh when we work with children and hopefully others will also.
Ms. Davis, uh thank you so much uh for the sign out in the Charlesburg. Thank you for the presentation. Um, York is covered in the curriculum at the high school level um for for history. So um, yeah, he is in the, when we teach Lewis and Clark, he is part of that curriculum, Sacagawea or Sacagawea. So um, yeah, he's one of the recorded first, first African-American men to be, have an official vote cuz they had to vote where they were gonna stay for the winter um out on the uh west coast. So um him and Sacagawea were allowed to vote, so and it's recorded, so.
Exactly.
Uh, pretty big, pretty good at that time in US history for that, for that to happen. So thank you.
But if I hadn't had that poster from Business Center. I might not know.
I'm gonna say this, before you go.
Yeah.
What we have in our, in our packet is the actual sign that went up.
The picture, there it is. There were several drafts I sent in before I got any approval and uh
Oh, I understand.
It may not be the final I would have picked right off, but it is a final that that's uh was acceptable.
I, I, I'm, I'm not sure of the accuracy of the the plaque because it was my understanding now that the 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 passage was in eighteen oh five, eighteen oh six. And it says in here that that York remained a slave until eighteen fifteen. But I didn't see in in my history any acknowledgement that he had ever been freed.
No, there's, there is no definite, there are rumors that he was freed, but it was not ever documented that we could say it.
Okay, but then this plaque says he was freed in eighteen thirty-two, so that's not really right.
There are many that say he was in eighteen thirty-two, but I didn't catch that myself.
Okay, so we, I mean, I love the idea of the plaque. Um, maybe we can talk to the Historic Resources books in Richmond.
I'll check on that.
Cuz I think they made a mistake.
I'm not sure the figure that they used there, but I'll look again.
That's really the tragedy of the whole thing. He did all of that work and and never got to be freed.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just appreciate learning that he was born in Caroline cuz until uh met up with Ms. Davis at the museum, I didn't know that. So um, I guess we need Lewis Clark and York Boulevard.
Yeah, it it says, yeah, yeah, it says on the National Park Service, it's the uh uh that's the his history after, Lewis and Clark is murky. So, anyway, um, uh, thank you for the presentation. We will go on to our next um, our next part of the agenda, which is appointments. Um, R A C S B Board of Directors, who is serving on that and who, is there anyone? Yeah, Mr. Parton.
That is Sean Kiger, I believe, Mr. Black.
Okay, that's mine.
He is fill, he filled Linda Carter's unexpired term. Uh, I think he was appointed in August of twenty-three. Um, so he's certainly eligible to serve another three-year term. I don't know whether he's interested in doing that. You may have spoken with him. I know he's in Alaska now, so.
Right, I will um, I have not talked to him, so let's put that off. Let's put that off to the next meeting. Um, Social Services Advisory Board, Bowling Green District.
I will nominate Jennifer one more. I mean, she's, she filled an unexpired term.
Like three months.
Right, I was gonna say it was very, very short and I know she's willing to serve.
So can you just?
Second.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reappoint.
My second.
Oh, he needs to just put the name on record.
Oh, Jennifer Stroud, sorry.
All right, uh so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All right, opposed, motion carries. All right, next up, we have the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Item G, Mr. Chairman.
Item G? Okay, is there anyone else that would like to pull uh item A through I with the exception of G? If not, I'll get a motion to approve those.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, a motion and a second. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item G, Mr. Underwood.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, I guess my question is, I'm not sure why this is only considered, sent agenda. We got this information on Thursday in the package regarding the designation for a portion of the North Anna. I'm not sure what that, I I read the benefits and the the number of people who signed the petition to do that for the five mile, I'm not sure where this is coming from without any discussion.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Parton, would you like to come up and discuss this?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you you have the request from a uh the citizens group and um the the process is, certainly the board can can uh have whatever discussion that you want and direct staff, but the process is outlined in the packet. Um, the first step in the, in the process is a study by uh DCR. And uh I did call and confirm that there's, there's been, they have no previous study on record. So if the board is interested, you would uh, you would need to authorize staff to submit a letter to DCR requesting a study. And if the study finds that it meets the criteria, then it would come back to the board to adopt a resolution um approving the study. And then at that point, I think the process calls for it to go to, or a general assembly member would have to sponsor it uh for it to be approved in the general assembly, so.
All we're doing right now is just the study.
Correct.
Yeah.
But but I'm saying, why is it five miles? Why isn't it then, the the, is it, is it required that it only be five miles or is it?
I think it has to be at least, at least five miles, Mr. Underwood, if memory serves correct.
But I'm saying, so we're we're only concerned about five miles of the North Anna and not the North Anna completely?
That would be up to the board, Mr. Underwood.
If we wanna do the, if we wanna do the whole North Anna, I mean, all the way.
I mean, with, I mean, with, to me, it would make more sense than, it's a lot of spot zoning to me.
Right, that's fine. If we wanna do the whole North Anna, if we wanna do the whole North Anna from the Spalsavany County line where it crosses over all the way down to.
If you're concerned about it, then be concerned.
No, it's, it's, it's pretty much, I've, I've canoed it several times. It's pretty much the kayak it, the pretty much the whole thing is rural. I mean, I don't know, familiar beyond Route One, um, the Route. I mean, I don't know, familiar beyond Route One, the Route One Bridge, but it's pretty much, it's definitely a rural river.
Right, I understand, but I'm saying, based on what I read, that we're only concerned about five miles of the.
Yeah, so let's.
Is that correct?
Yeah, it's a five-mile stretch, but let's, let's.
So why only a five-mile stretch?
I have no idea. So why don't we just, why don't we just do the whole river then?
Why don't, the whole river that's in Caroline, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I just ask a question?
Sure.
Maybe you should explain to people what this designation means. Since the board is talking about doing it, I don't think a lot of people would know what that designation means and what impact that designation has. So apparently you know, so if you could tell us.
Yeah. And I have another question, Mr. Chair, for answering questions.
Let me ask it that one.
Go for it. So, Mr. Parton, can you, can you kind of come on up and do a little explaining so that way, I mean, it's in the packet, but that's fine.
I read it was in the packet, that's why I was, but I mean, it's not only for us who have a packet, it's for, you know, the people watching and whatnot, just to make sure we all understand what that means.
Looking for, the only thing that I know is that there is a state program, the Virginia Scenic Rivers Program, that's managed by the state in partnership with citizens and local government. And it focuses on enhancing the conservation of scenic rivers and their corridors and rivers that are designated as a scenic river as part of the program or recognized for their scenic recreational, historic and natural characteristics. And rivers that are, or streams that gain this designation are honored by community groups, localities, DCR and the general assembly as being Virginia's finest.
Right, that's what's in the package. So, I mean, I read that, that's not the question. The question is, again, if you're going to bring something to the board, why would you bring five, only five miles if you've got the North Anna, which is, which is a beautiful stretch of water, no question, then my question is, how would you, why would you bring only a five-mile portion that's been debated for on the hollow, just say, this is what we need to, what about the Rappahannock, hey, isn't that a wonderful river?
It's already a scenic river.
The Rappahannock's already designated and it doesn't, it just means that it's just recognized by the state as a river that's not very developed. You don't, you don't see a lot of that on the James River because you have, if you go through the James River, there are portions of the upper James that are. But the reality behind it is the areas that are urban areas usually are not designated, just recognized as a.
So we're not concerned about the full river?
What's that?
We're only not concerned about the full river being.
I have no problem doing the whole river. I don't, I don't, I mean, I have no problem doing five miles, I have no problem doing the whole river. I mean, if you want to do the study for the whole river, I'm fine with that.
I'm still trying to get my question answered.
So I don't know why we're arguing about.
It's not long, it's still my turn, I'm still trying to get my question answered. I'm still trying to get my question answered and then I will let go, but it says in the packet, we're protecting open space, agricultural land, forest land. Does that mean there can be no development on a scenic river? Does that mean there can be no farming, no runoff from pesticides and things? What does that actually mean? And that's what I want to know before we go forward with this.
Mr.
But let them answer my question.
But that can be done, like they're doing a study right now and then it has to come back to us. So if we want to get someone from, if we want to pull it and get someone from DCR here, then we can do that. I mean, this is, this is not something that should be debated. Like this is something that is, is just really, just saying this is a beautiful section of river and then.
Well, let's get somebody to come and tell us about it.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, go for it. That's ridiculous.
We've done this with Rappahannock River. The thing is, this is coming from the York River Stewart. I would suggest that we contact the Friends of the Rappahannocks and say our more local group, get them to come and talk, bring it up, make sure everything's on board, answer all these questions and postpone this until our next meeting.
Then we can put it on the, Mr. Parton, can you put it on the regular, can you put it on the regular agenda for the next, next meeting? And then get someone from DCR here to answer these questions, this is.
It's a great program, I just think we don't know where this comes from.
That's where the confusion is. It's not that it could be a benefit to the county or to the river, I'm just saying, why not the complete river? That's all, that's, yes, that's.
We will, we will, we will talk about the complete river at the next meeting.
Seems to be.
That's fine.
Something else going on.
There really isn't, but that's.
I hear you. Mr. Parton?
Yes.
Do you know, we only share a border, does, do both localities have to do this or is it just, can one locality promote this?
Where's the borderline?
It's in the middle of the river.
Yeah, and they control the actual, the river, when you're in the North Anna, you're actually in Hanover. But the, obviously, the property is, they control the river.
So the line is on the northern bank of the.
They control for the, I shouldn't say that, the river, the river is, you're in, you're in the river, you're half in Caroline, but they control the water rights. Hanover controls the water rights to the river. But the line is actually, let me rephrase that, the middle of the river is actually the line. But the water rights go to, any water rights go to Hanover.
Because they had the first, they had the first draw.
Right, right. So, yes.
Water straw rights.
Yes, yeah, for like withdrawal, withdrawal of water.
Withdrawal water.
So we will bring it up, we will bring it up the next meeting. Okay?
Shouldn't you defer, Ms. Chairman?
No, I don't think we need a motion, we'll just defer, I mean, if that's okay, we'll just, it's going to be on the, we'll just.
Just move it to the next meeting?
Move it to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next up, we have public comments, but we're way before public comment time. So why don't we do, do we want to do number six?
Did we ever.
Right, yeah, we did. We had a motion to approve A through I and we seconded it, right?
Wouldn't we be better off going to closed meeting rather than?
I was trying to get six in before the closed meeting, but.
Six?
Six and then closed, that's what I was trying to do. Because we've had most of the discussion on that, so at some point, I mean.
Are they here?
Yeah, I think, I think they're here, but we've already had the public hearing on it. So it's really up to us now, because if we, I mean, our, our rules say, once we've had a public hearing, no one else can really, can really speak on it, so it's now, it's going to be, it's in our hands. So let's go ahead, if the board is okay with that, we'll do number six and then go to the, go to closed. All right. Mr. Hughes or Mr. Parton, do you guys want to take this?
Mr. Chair, only I was going to say is, representatives from Rappahannock Electric were planning to be here tonight to, in case you have had any questions, so I don't know if you have any value for their input tonight or not. Just wanted to let you know before you move forward with this.
I mean, are we ready to vote on this or you, or you want, do you want to wait on them? I mean.
I think we should wait till after, more closely words on the agenda.
Okay, so let's try then, do we want to go to number seven then? I'm trying to get some stuff in before, because if we go to closed, then I'm trying to get some stuff in before the closed session, because with closed session, I don't think it's going to take us 45 minutes. So the library hours, Mr. Parton?
This up Shaw.
This up Shaw.
Making up Shaw is going to present this, Mr. Chairman.
So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Back at your January 23 meeting, we discussed several options for expanding hours at the library branches. Was asked to look for some other options and collect additional data to assist the board with making that decision. And so in the intervening weeks since then, we have done just that, so. Alright, just as a refresher, this is our current hours of operation. We are in compliance with the state aid code of Virginia for requirements for libraries, but we do not have very many evening or Saturday hours. Just a few things to touch on briefly before we get to the data. First, I looked at our typical schedules for the branches to see where we were having issues, where a library assistant was working as the only library assistant. Usually there is a branch manager there with the library assistant, so they're not totally alone, but that's not always the case and branch managers often get pulled away to deal with issues in the branch or at other branches, so. This is why when further down the line, we are going to be asking for at least one new position if we make any changes to the schedule. Second, I was asked by Mr. Sealy to include a discussion of electronic materials, so this is eBooks, e-audio books. Demand is increasing for these items, but the lending model for them is very confusing. And so I just wanted to talk to you guys about that. Essentially, you cannot own a copy of an electronic book or e-audio book. Amazon can snatch it out of your Kindle, same thing happens with libraries occasionally. All we can do is basically purchase the right to lend it for a certain amount of time or a certain number of checkouts. I included a example, The 24th Hour by James Patterson in your packet and on this slide. Basically, it's far more expensive to purchase the electronic version, both initially and over time. And we often have to repurchase these materials. For example, Where the Crawdads Sing was one of the most popular books of 2022, it still has a two-week waiting period, so we would have to, if the, say the copy expired, we'd have to repurchase that one.
Mr. Black? I stopped and talked at length about the library one afternoon and I wish, I was pretty surprised, I see Mr. Forehand's face about, you don't own your electronic book, it goes away. I had the same look as she was telling me this and she had just come back from a regional meeting to talk about electronic books and the trials and tribulations of those that people just don't realize. So our expense for the library, though everything is going electronic, it expires, unlike a book that sits on a shelf, which surprised me. So I don't know what the solution to that is, but in talking to her, in the amount of time and the number of books that do expire and their checkout, you almost have to have a different system to check that, to see what the periodicity going in and out is and do you renew that one or do you, do you get additional copies of something else? And I think it's a different library than we all grew up with. I mean, the electronic portion of this is just completely a different model than any of us are used to. So I was, I told her it was something that she needed to inform us about because we have to look at how we're going to handle the library in this new era of things that can disappear that you don't own, that you paid for. So I think.
But I mean, you and I both know, it's not the technology that does that, it's the Amazons of the world who are billion-dollar companies.
Yep.
That are charging over and over again.
Yep, because that, there's no business model if you buy it and it's yours forever. We can, people could buy it and donate it and see that, those days are gone, so we're going to have to look differently at the library system than we, than we have in the past where you, you bought a book, you had it forever. We just, that just doesn't happen anymore, just, I was surprised and I just wanted to reiterate that point.
Or look at people to stop gouging, because that's all it is.
Well, everybody, everybody who writes that's in it for, as we know, the licensing. Mr. Thomas, you were a software vendor, licensing was king. When your license expired, what kind of deal could you make? And we just don't have that ability.
So go, so I'm sorry, go on.
Oh, no, we have tried with, I know a couple of years ago, we had issues with some of the publishers, they refused to sell to libraries and it was a big, big mess, basically, so I totally understand. But we're just looking at, as Mr. Sealy said, it's going to be far more expensive to keep our collections up with demand, so that's part of the reason why we're part of a consortium, but we do have responsibilities to buy for us.
On that question, this up Shaw, if I take out, check out an electronic book, it's on my computer, I can download that, that file any other kind of way, I can turn it into a PDF and save it myself, because I know how to do that.
Yeah, you're not supposed to, but yes, you can do that.
But I mean, is that why people, why the vendors are doing this or what?
I think that's a big part of it, yes. Also, they just, I mean, think about like streaming TV, like very few of the streaming services provide their TV shows, movies on DVD because then you don't have to keep paying month by month to keep watching whatever you wanted to watch, so I think it's the similar kind of way the world is going, unfortunately.
I've noticed that with DirecTV.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alrighty, so now we're going to move on to the actual data. So this is a repeat of the slide that I provided to you guys with the addition of the FY24 data so far. There's still about six weeks in, as of when I collected this. So we are at pretty much where we were last year. Lady Smith succeeded already, Port Royal's exceeded already, and we expect that Dawn and Bowling Green will eventually get to above where they were last year. But we are still much lower than we were pre-pandemic, so. Great, so one of the first things we were asked to do was a option to look at possibly switching, closing a day during the week to open on Saturday. So we went back and looked at the daily average of patrons that walk through the door for each weekday to try and figure out like what would be the best day for that. This data is from July 2023 through April of '24, so it's our most recent information. Alright, so based on that, we determined that Friday would be the best day to close the libraries. We decided to go with a single day, similar to the convenience sites, because we felt that would create the least amount of confusion for patrons, but it also means that unfortunately there would be a day when patrons could not use the library at all. They would be limited to online resources. Another issue with this option is that we are trading a day that has, you know, say like it, looking at the average daily visits, Friday for, Lady Smith has 45 people and on Saturday they only have about 22. So we may be doing more harm than good by closing a weekday in order to do a Saturday. For this, we would request one additional part-time position for the Dawn Branch that would also act as a floater. And then because we are just adding hours to Port Royal, that staff member would need an additional five hours of salary, so that total is $21,151. Alright, for options two and three, we collected hourly attendance data from January 29th to May 3rd. The following slide showed the average number of people who visited the library during each hour, with the blue cells representing the highest averages and the red cells representing the lowest. I will, one caveat is this time period for Bowling Green included all of the tax season, so Mondays and Wednesdays are probably slightly higher averages than they would be the rest of the year.
Mr. Chairman? Can I ask? Mike, is there any difference between the summer visitation and I know winter, it gets darker earlier and in the summer that we have more light?
Um, we do, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Is there any difference between visitation? Because I would think there would be.
There is some, especially because we do have the summer reading program for, so for those six weeks, we generally have more programs and we will get more people in, but it's not a very large difference, I would say.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask something? I have a point to make. In our booklet here, we have the days and the counts and then below that, we have a scale of the hours. I think, I think, yes, we do need to close on a day because if you look, say in Bowling Green, that, in Lady Smith, the days that they are open until 8:00 PM is their highest number date. And, I'm going to get my point. And again, on Thursday, when they're open until 8:00, it's their second highest date. In Bowling Green, the later the hours, the higher the number, because you can't get the people who work in the morning or the middle of the afternoon. I really think we need to think about maybe sending out the days for the hours and moving them until later, because it's all your later hours that have your higher numbers, because...
Because they, the days themselves have higher numbers, but the actual hourly, when people come in, those are our fewest number of visits. So like for Bowling Green, we have less than one person between seven and eight o'clock. Same thing for, uh, the Lady Smith branch. Those are the lowest numbers of average people coming through.
Okay, so your lowest numbers really are sort of in the middle of the day.
For some branches, yes. Like Dawn.
I still think for students and working people, we need some evening hours, which is why I think we need to have Saturday afternoon evening hours.
And, and if I could piggyback on that point, I, I agree. I mean, there's a lot of people, I mean, if you're closing our, we're closing our libraries at five or six, I mean, for a working parent who needs to get to the library, it doesn't, it doesn't offer them an opportunity.
Yes.
To, you know, I mean, for the people who work till five o'clock or whatever, and, you know, people who want to do whatever, we, we need them open later at night. I'm not saying you have to open, to stay open till midnight, but we are going to need later hours.
And, and say, in the Port Royal area, the school buses don't unload until after four. So if a student needs to go and get something, they, you know, first thing they're going to do is go home, get something before they go worry about there's homework. And they're not going to get there at five if they get off school bus, 4:30. I just, and I'm not talking to you, I'm just saying, I think in general, we need to look at this as to how to reach the largest.
Spoiler alert, we think it's number three. We, we, I do talk about that a little bit in option three, and I think that is a good place to start with that. But, um, we were first asked to look at like a net zero switch in hours so that there wouldn't be any additional hours. So we cut hours during the week in order to add those hours back in on Saturday. So that is what we have come up with for option two. The total hours would stay the same, but we do request that we would add another position to the Dawn branch, just because they do have so many hours where somebody's working by themselves. So that total salary increase would be $16,920.80. Unfortunately, because of how the hourly worked out, it cuts a lot of the evening hours because those are our lowest attended hours. So.
Can, can I, I mean, can I make a suggestion? I know you've worked hard on this.
Yes.
And I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but, um, you know, your latest on option three, which is the one that you said is the optional schedule. The, the latest on option three, you have one night, which is in Bowling Green, where you stay open till eight. Every day of the week, we're closing, you know, Lady Smith at six, one, we have one Thursday at seven.
Mondays and Thursdays would be until seven.
Yes, okay, Monday and Thursday, yes. And I don't know how the rest of the board would like to, to, to go with this, but I would, I would be okay with closing one day a week if we could go later in the evenings on the others. So, I mean, I don't know how the rest of the board, I, I just feel like, I, and if the board doesn't want to do that, but I just, I feel like we need to have later hours for the, for the people who are getting off work and school and, um, you know, some people just can't get there at six.
Yeah. I, I totally understand that. I think we were looking at option three as a sort of stopgap for right now. Expand the hours in Lady Smith. Um, it does cut Mondays and Thursdays by one hour, but that is their lowest attended hour. And then adding that additional hour on Tuesdays and Wednesdays in addition to also adding Saturdays for every week, so.
And I think on Saturdays, I'm, I'm sorry, I should have gotten permission. Uh, on Saturdays, you could probably start later.
We're not seeing that with the hourly attendance for, uh, the Lady Smith Saturdays. It's their highest on Saturdays is nine o'clock in the morning. Um, we have a lot of people, we find that we have a lot of people who are on their way out of town to Fredericksburg or Ashland. So they stop in on their way out of town. So that's why we suggested nine AM.
Yeah, it's one of those things, you can't get your kids on the weekend out of bed before ten or eleven if they've got a project due at school. It's just thought. Thank you.
Ms. Upshaw?
Yes, sir.
Um, without being too, too personal, how much would it cost for us to add ten more hours of being open to any of these options?
I mean, so you're talking.
We're paying maybe $20 an hour?
Well, with the new pay plan, the base salary would be $1627 an hour.
Okay, so let's make it twenty so the math is easy for me.
Yeah.
So if you pay $20 an hour, it'll be $200 a week, $10,000 a year.
It would be $400 a week because we do twenty hours a week for our part-time people.
No, I'm saying if we add ten hours worth of opening.
I'm sorry, yes.
So, I mean, and, and, and you work that out with every way you can. But if we add ten hours a week at $20 an hour, which would be less, that's $200.
Yeah.
Times fifty weeks, is that ten, that's $10,000 plus two more.
Tamika's saying yes. She can do math faster than me.
That's why it made it easy for me.
Yeah.
So if we added another $10,000 to option three, you could figure out where to put longer hours as Mr. Black is asking for and, you know, do the schedule the way you want.
Okay. I mean, we could definitely do that. I would just ask that there would be an option to cut back if it's not being used.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, really, we're trying to provide access of your services to all the citizens of the county that need it.
But I think, sort of going back to what Mr. Seeley was talking about with electronic, our stuff is going more and more electronic, so the use of the building itself is going down. I think that's part of the reason why our visit numbers are going down or haven't bounced back to where they were pre-pandemic. People figured out how to use Overdrive. They figured out how to use our databases at home, and so they don't come into the building to do that. They're still checking things out. It's just not.
I can check out a book from home?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I've been coming in all this time. Okay, let me figure that out then.
Well, you can check out an electronic book at home. Yeah, so.
Okay, okay.
Well, you can read it as many times as you can in the lending period, but.
Have it on the shelf and then read it again a couple of years later without, checking it out after it's already expired by.
Mr. Chair, I would ask that we defer this. Uh, I'd like to look at it some more. I'd also like to talk to, um, the Port Royal Town Council, since it's their building.
Yes.
Um, there was some mention that maybe they would like to have days when they have meetings closed.
Okay.
And then maybe they would have hours that could go to another day that would not affect the budget. So that would be, uh, one reason I would like to look at this a little bit more, and I still think we need afternoon hours.
I'll, I'll second that motion for deferral, and I would, I would like to see, I would like to see the option one where we, it's, we do, so it's like, I, I hear what Mr. Seeley's saying. But there's still people, there's. But anyway, um, I hear what's, what they're saying, but I also, um, I do feel like we do need to extend the hours in the evening, so I wouldn't mind seeing a mixture of option one. Pick a day, maybe Friday, where we're not open. All the libraries are closed, so you can, you can keep it within the budget. And then the other, the other days of the week, um, we're, we're open longer. So that way you're not spending all your time on building costs and you can get the electric, you know, the eBooks that you need. So I have a motion and a second to defer. Any other?
Well, just one comment. I think we need to look at, I don't know what the, I don't remember the library budget off the top of my head, most of it's, most of it's personnel costs. But I think we need to start looking at and helping her develop what the materials we need to do and what needs to be renewed and what direction we're going to go as the library services change, because I was very surprised in the time I spent talking in the library about what there was and what there wasn't and who came in and, like, we all didn't know you could check up electronic book out online. I mean, there are things that were, but there's going to be additional cost for the materials. It's not like buying a book, and I think we need to have that discussion at some point.
I, I do think as well also that, yeah, yeah.
Well, we don't, we don't charge for electronic books, do we?
No. Libraries typically don't charge.
By law, we cannot charge for the sort of essential library service, services. So checking out books, using a computer, we are legally not allowed to charge people for that.
Right, okay. Okay, so you have, um, you kind of have, so we're motion, we have a motion and a second to defer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What, when do you want to bring this back or is there, do we care?
Got to give her some time.
Yeah, we're going to, you're going to need. Yeah, come back in August?
Yeah, August would be good.
Okay, so motion to defer to August.
Can we give her the option, um, since she manages the library, of experimenting with times between now and then? To say, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to have another hour in Lady Smith or another hour in Dawn or whatever.
No, then you're going to, yeah, then, then you're getting the budget out of whack and, I would just assume her come back with a holistic plan and in August, so that way we can move forward. So, uh, what was the, do we have a division in the House on the, on the deferral? Mr., Mr., uh, Forehand, was everyone okay with the, the deferral? Yes, okay, alright.
That August for her to come back, I think that's fine.
And I just ask that she could have an option.
Alright, thank you. Alright, uh, next up, do you want to do the motion for session?
I move that this board convene in the closed meeting pursuant to, one, the real estate in consultation with legal counsel exceptions of section 2.2-3711A, 3, A7 and 8 of the Code of Virginia to discuss the acquisition of land in the Port Royal District and potential associated legal action where such consultation would adversely affect the negotiating and, and litigating posture of the board. And the pers, two, the personnel exception of section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia to discuss personnel matters related to the compensation of specific employees of the Department of Public Works and Utilities.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to, uh, glow, uh, go into closed session. All those in favor, say aye. Motion carries. We are in closed session. Uh, public comment time will be at 7:30, so we're going to do everything in our power to be back then. Um, at that time, we can, you can have comments on whatever you want. Thank you. Um, at that time, we can, you can have comments on whatever you want. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we are going to. I need a motion to come out of closed session, please.
So move.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, aren't you? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are on a closed session. Ms. Long, could you read the statement?
I made that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors certify that to the best of each board member's knowledge that only the public business matters lawfully accepted from the open meeting requirement by the Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board. Can I get a second?
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Forehand, you certify that everything that we discussed in closed meeting was on the agenda for a closed meeting?
I so certify.
Mr. Thomas?
I so certify.
Mrs. Long?
I so certify.
Mr. Seeley?
I so certify.
I so certify.
All right, we are now out of closed meeting, and we are now to the point, or do we have anything coming out of close that we need to do right now? Oh, I so certify as well, I'm sorry, I am sorry, and I so certify as well, that's right. All right, next up on the list, we have the public comment period of our agenda. This is for anything that is not a public hearing. And so if there's anyone who would like to speak about anything that is not a public hearing or has been a public hearing in the last, last few meetings, you may come up and talk about anything you would like to.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Board of Supervisors, first let me apologize for my attire, but there's a bunch of us in there playing pickleball, so I just came to speak on behalf of our group out there. We typically have all the courts filled every night in the gym. We appreciate the Tuesday and Saturdays that you have so graciously given us, and it was much needed for Caroline County. I myself have been playing for about five years and then going to Fredericksburg and Stafford and recently Hanover. And it's a growing sport, and it's so versatile for all ages, from like five or six up to, I play with people that are eighty-seven years old. Doing the versatility of the county's ages that we have people in Caroline, I just think it would be a great asset to have something like this for the people, so it's for all ages. Kids, kids are playing their moms and dads, it's a great family time, it's outside, it's exercise. I know there's a cost involved, but there's other things we could do, like, you know, if we had to maybe put lines on a pickleball, on a tennis court, we can use tennis courts, if we could get some funds to do that until you can see how how the sport is growing and how many people that we have in the county. If I could ask all my pickleball players to stand up.
Mr. Chairman.
So we started this, yeah.
If I, if I may, are y'all aware that we approved last meeting four pickleball courts at the park?
Well, we're, we're voting on the appropriation tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, we were, we were thought that you were approving the money tonight.
No, we did it last time.
Oh, so we're good?
It's already on motion.
We're good to go?
Magisterial district and.
No, no, yes, what is your magisterial district, please?
Bowling Green.
It's on the agenda for tonight, Mr. Forehand, for the.
Tammy Gaines, one fifteen East Broad.
The money on the agenda for tonight. Look at, because the cost has gone up.
Okay, I was under the impression we had.
It's honor, yes, we have to, we have to appropriate the money.
We came back, that's right, we approved something, but not the whole, whole.
Yes.
Okay, my apologies.
So we're on?
Yep.
It's good?
We just have to approve the funds.
We just have to approve the funds.
Well. I vote for approving the funds. Thank you guys so much.
That's awesome, that's awesome. Would anyone else like to speak on anything that is not a public hearing? Or has been a public hearing? Would anyone else like to speak? All right, aye.
Good evening, Kevin Collins, Reedy Church District. Just wanted to thank the board members tonight that actually read the DCR River designation and understood what the program stands for. The reason this particular section of river was chosen was because DCR has already designated it from Route seven thirty-eight to Route one Chandler Crossing. That is the reason it was chosen. There were no ulterior motives, it's not being done to ruin anybody's plans or tell people how to use their property. This is a state program. No funds will be incurred by Caroline County. It adds to the tourism of Caroline County. It shows the board actually cares about what their citizens want, what their citizens need, and not what others outside of the county want or need. The people of Caroline are represented by all six people on the board. And I was at a community meeting just this last week where I was told that's not the case, that it's up to the person sitting on the stage to decide, and he ju, and they, and you guys just take on suggestions from the citizens. So I commend everyone who read it and understood what it meant for the county to have this designation. If we want to extend it to the Caroline-Hanover border in the north, it would be about a, maybe a mile and a half inclusion. We have no authority to add Spotsylvania or Louisa because we do not share a river border with either county. So just to clarify that, and thank you, appreciate it.
Mrs. Danner?
Good evening, Chairman and board members. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm in Mr. Seeley's Bowling Green District. I was not able to attend previous meetings, and I heard you say something about anything that was discussed at a public hearing recently, but what my comment is not specifically in regard to number six, it's just like a general comment I would like to make about data centers.
If it's a.
It's not specific to that.
If it's a general comment about data centers and not specific to any one project, then that is fine.
Okay. I grew up in Caroline County, still live here. My husband and I retired. We live on a fixed income. I do not feel like, we do not feel like this county is in a position to take on any data center infrastructure. I really hope you six board members will really, really consider your vote, I don't know whether you voted on number six tonight or not, or whether y'all have already voted, or whatever you've done, but I really hope you will think about the future. Our families, our children, our grandchildren, our whomever, they're the ones gonna have to pay for this. I won't be here. I'm sure a lot of other folks my age won't be here either. Think about our future, they're the ones gonna have to pay for this. And I am hearing that my Dominion bill will double or triple. I'm very upset about that because I heard Dominion will be seriously involved in this infrastructure. Right now I have charges on my Dominion bill that I don't even know what I'm paying for. There are surcharges on my bill that says deferred. I'm paying so many dollars a month. For what? So anyway, I hope y'all will think about the citizens, the infrastructure cost, anything that's associated with data centers before you approve any of them or anything. And I would appreciate you considering us senior retired people also. I got a number two thing, if you don't mind. I, sorry, Miss Davis left, because I'm, I'm also a member of Historic Port Row, and I would like to invite you guys. I hope to see all you at the Fourth of July event at Historic Port Row this year at ten o'clock. All you congregation folks, ten o'clock, July the fourth, at Historic Port Row for our twenty-third Historic Port Row Fourth of July event. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on anything? Is there anything, I do have, if the board doesn't mind, I have a, I got an email before the board meeting from someone who was in favor of pickleball, so I don't know if you want me to read it, she asked if it should be written in the record or just what, what, how do we want to do, it was. Ms. Hall, then just, can you just put that in the record then, as someone who is in favor of pickleball? Yeah, okay, so that is, that is it. We will move on to item number, or item number four. Our first public hearing tonight, the VDOT Secondary Twenty Thirty Secondary System Six-Year Improvement Plan. And that is, is Mr., okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As I said, tonight is the public hearing for the secondary six-year plan. And as you all know, this is the plan for determining how the county uses some funds for improving some roads in the county. This year's plan has the addition of one project right now. And that is, I'll mention at the end, but right now on the plan there is Farmer Drive, which is a rural western project, which is complete. Then there's Rattletrap Drive, which is in progress right now. And then there's also Caroline Street, which is a rural addition program, project, and then the new project that was added are the turn lanes or turn lane on Devil's Three Jump Road onto Route two oh seven. And one of the things that we are looking at with the Transportation Committee is prioritizing our unpaved roads in the county so that they can eventually find their way on the secondary six-year plan. We have not a lot of unpaved roads in the county, I think there are four that may be eligible for these funds. There are some criteria that these funds need to, I mean, those roads need to meet in order to be eligible for these funds. And so the committee is going to prioritize those roads in terms of cost, traffic volumes, and bring them on to the plan. The plan can be amended in off-years, so there's no issue that if it's not done showing up on the plan tonight, then it can certainly show up in the future if there are plans or projects. Mr. Sperlock with VDOT is here also, and can certainly speak to the funding, the specific amounts of funding in these specific projects, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. I have a statement, but Mr. Seeley first.
Mr. Thomas and I had talked about a right turn lane off of three oh one into the transfers facility, and I didn't see that on here, I didn't know if we were doing that differently or if it was not on here.
Good evening, Rick Sperlock, VDOT, Fredericksburg Residency. The reason that project can't be on the secondary six-year plan, so it's primary, so it's a different kind of funding. We do have a county safety and operational improvement type of fund that I'm planning on using for that project. That should be replenished July first, so sometime later this summer, I'll be looking to go out there and work on that.
Okay, I, I was just, I didn't notice it and didn't think about it being a primary road, not a secondary. Thank you.
Yes, I can teach you a second, let me, I wanted to make sure, just in case anybody's hearing, I have spoken to VDOT about Mudville Road. They've started doing their research, but I went down there on a rainy day in a four-wheel drive, and I turned around and came back. So that one definitely needs to be considered and gotten on as soon as possible. And if Caroline Street does get repaved pretty soon, it's gonna be a dirt road because potholes are starting to eat cars. Thank you. Mr. Underwood?
Mr. Hughes, what about Rutha Glen Road where the distribution center? What are we doing? There's still two lane, and the big trucks are still eating up the shoulder, and now you've got about a eight-inch dip from the road to the side there. What, what are we doing? Are we? We, we had asked for that to be, I thought, in the highway corridor plan or something in the six-year plan, but I don't see anything there.
So that road is a part of a study right now that is being undertaken to determine what the ultimate improvements along there will need to be?
Do we have a, do we have a estimation of time when the study's gonna be completed and when there's gonna be discussion?
I don't at this point, no. The other thing that's happening is there's some new development that is proposed in that area, so there could be, that new development will also have to do some traffic studies, and there could be improvements brought on by development that is occurring in the area as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Mr. Thomas?
Thank you. Mr. Sperlock, you, you mentioned the fact that we were gonna do the, the turn into the landfill site. That is on what program again? You, you mentioned it, and I, I met some people out there, they'd already marked where they expected to go, but what's the program one more time?
It's called County Safety and Operational Improvement, or CSOI. And each of our counties, I get a little pot of money for each to do turn lanes and safety projects like that.
So there is a, a right turn lane going in?
There is not.
There is not?
There is not. That's, that's gonna start July one, you're saying?
It can, I need to do some utility reviews to make sure there's nothing under there that's gonna be in the way. There is a sanitary sewer line that I will need to lower a manhole, and it'll have to be in the turn lane, but that's okay for low, low volume like that.
Okay, I, I need to stress how critical that project is. From personal experience, I was in front of a bus the last time I went to the dump, and the bus had bad brakes, but he was literally right in my trunk when I made the turn, so it really is a dangerous spot. And I don't want us to have a fatality there and then start doing it. My other question is, you mentioned dirt roads or unpaved roads in the county? How do we get an unpaved road on that list? Because I've had one from a church member, it's in Mr. Seeley's district, for twenty-five years, they've been trying to get some sort of paving, so.
Is it already in the system?
No.
So.
Mr. Bates can tell you all about it, because I call him on a regular basis about it.
Okay, I would have to review it and make sure of its eligibility. And I could send you that information, but basically it has to be available for public use for at least twenty years. Has to have a forty-foot right away unencumbered by utilities and just certain things like that. If it's already in the state system, but it's an unpaved road that you're looking to pave, it has to have at least fifty vehicles per day, and that's.
Fifty vehicle trips per day?
Yes.
Okay.
And that doesn't sound like a lot, but right now you only have four that meet that criteria.
Okay, if you could send me that, I'd, I'd really appreciate it, and I'll, you know, talk directly with you to follow up.
Will do.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone else have any other questions? If not, we haven't, have you opened the public hearing? The public hearing is open. Okay, this is real, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Oh, we're on five, okay. We never did the public hearing? Yes, we never, we need to open up the public hearing. Nancy, can I? Yeah, can I just open the public hearing? Note the gavels. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing for the VDOT Twenty Twenty Five Secondary System Six-Year Improvement Plan and the secondary road construction budget. If there's anyone who would like to discuss the Secondary System Six-Year Improvement Plan or Secondary Road Construction Budget, please come forward. If there's anyone who would like to discuss the Secondary Six-Year Improvement Plan or the Secondary Road Construction Budget, please come forward. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Board, how would I like to dispose of this?
Move for the adoption.
All right, move, move for adoption in a second of the VDOT Twenty Twenty Five Twenty Thirty Secondary Six-Year Improvement Plan. I have a motion and a second motion by Mr. Thomas, second by Mrs. Long. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries, I vote aye as well, motion carries unanimously. All right, we are on to number five. The Ladies Bisnick Park LLC owner Cynthia Claire for a Berry Fun Daycare Preschool.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Second public hearing tonight, Berry Fun Daycare SPE X zero three twenty twenty-four. You can't hear, can you, can you hear now? All right, up. All right, up. All right. The applicant's requesting approval of a special exception permit to allow childcare facility pursuant to Article nine, section three point nine of the Caroline County zoning ordinance. The facility is located within the Ladies Smith Industrial Park on Ladies Smith Road. The parcel contains four tenant buildings currently occupied by a title company, chiropractor, barber, fitness center, coffee shop, insurance office, construction company office, speech therapist, and a thrift store. The facility would be accessed via existing entrance on Center Drive. The surrounding properties of the daycare center highlighted in green. Within the Ladies Smith Industrial Park include Giuseppe's Italian Restaurant to the south, Countryside Daycare and Keys Academy Private School to the east opposite Center Drive, and Ladies Smith Self-Storage to the west and north. Ladies Smith Self-Storage is enclosed by a six foot tall fence surrounding the entirety of the property. The applicant's proposing to occupy Suite A of one seven four seven zero Center Drive. The interior of the structure is approximately twenty-five hundred square feet and the parking lot to the north would be converted into a two thousand square foot playground with mulch and play equipment should this request be approved. The conversion will result in the loss of approximately five parking spaces. The daycare is required to have a minimum of five parking spaces and the existing park area, parking area will still meet the minimum requirement. The facility was previously used as a medical office and utilities and parking are existing. The only planned upgrade to the site is the addition of the playground area to the north of the structure. There is a side door to the suite that will have direct access to the play area and will remain locked except when used. The facility is located at the end of the drive aisle and parking area for the four tenant buildings. Access to the facility is from one direction reducing path, pass through vehicular traffic. Parking is located in front of the building with direct access to the daycare. The Department of Education determines the number of children allowed within a childcare facility based on the square footage of the interior of the building and the fenced in playground area. The applicant has completed all pre-licensing requirements set forth by the Department of Education. The applicant's narrative notes that the daycare would start with approximately ten children, but could expand based on the Department of Education regulations. The site meets all special exception standards set forth in Caroline County zoning ordinance. Staff did not have any comments regarding the site. The Department of Education and Social Services will address licensing requirements and regulations should this project be approved. The comprehensive plan depicts this area as commercial office and childcare facility is a permitted use with approval of special exception in the B one zoning district. This use is consistent with the existing uses in the industrial park and conforms with the comprehensive plan. That concludes the presentation and I'll be happy to address any present, any questions that the board may have.
Does any board member have any questions before, oh, Mr. Thomas?
Is this, is the applicant here?
Yeah, the applicant is, applicant sir.
Yes.
Same, that's not the same applicant that tried to do the one on two oh seven next to McDonald's?
Yes, after the denial, she reapplied.
It is the same.
Yes.
Okay, then I have a question for her whenever she gets her turn. Thank you. No, you can wait. Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Benny.
Okay. All right, does any of the board members have a question now before I go ahead and open the public hearing? All right, I am gonna go ahead and open the public hearing uh for special exception zero three two thousand twenty-four. Lady Business Park LLC owner Cynthia Claire, Berry Fun Daycare preschool applicant. If anyone would like to come down now and speak regarding this uh, oh, yeah, yeah, she's, yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Claire, would you like to give a presentation? Nope, she doesn't want to, okay. So that then, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak regarding the daycare center? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak regarding the daycare center? One more time. Hearing that no one in the audience would like to he uh speak on this public hearing, I'll declare the public hearing closed. All right, now, board members, yes, Mr. Thomas.
Now we're ready. And I want to say first of all, you are really committed to having a daycare center.
I'm committed, first of all, I apologize, I've got the bronchitis. I'm committed to give children in Caroline County a safe and fun environment. And that is what I'm committed to because Caroline County needs it.
Okay, and and the the question I I really have is you were required by the two oh seven site to do certain improvements. Have you been required to do certain improvements on this particular site?
No.
Okay, so you didn't necessarily lose more money pending this one?
No.
Okay.
I had to put another, and I'm gonna ask. I had to put the money down for the permit again, and if I could actually get that money back, I'd really, really appreciate it cause I did lose so much money on the last building. It would help me out a lot.
Okay.
This is Port Royal, so.
I don't have any questions for the applicant. I called and spoke. Um, this certainly is, and I told her, this is an appropriate place. I think the other place was, this is an appropriate place, daycare centers are needed. Even years and years ago, when my children were young, it was hard to find enough spaces. You were on waiting list if you wanted routine uh services. I think there's a need. I think the location is good. It's a much safer area. The building was used previously as a doctor's office, so it's got uh, it's been well taken care of. And I, and so I would support this.
So is that a, is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Does anyone have any other questions before Mr. Underwood or?
I just wondered how much the second permit was.
It was.
The cost of a special exception permit is two thousand dollars plus fifty dollars an acre, so she paid two thousand and fifty dollars for the second application.
Um, Miss Long, if you don't mind, I'd ask that you include that in your motion.
I don't mind, but what was, do you know what the first application was?
Two thousand and fifty-six.
And I don't know.
It was, it was the same, cause it was still under an acre, so it was two thousand and fifty dollars for the first application that was denied and then two thousand and fifty dollars for this application as well.
Let me have a a quick discussion before I make a motion.
She had to spend a lot of money on the first site.
I just wanna make sure that everybody else is comfortable with this. I know she did lose a lot of money on the first one and it is fitting a need. I just wanted to make sure legally and everything else, we were all right with this because I don't, I want this not to be something that becomes routine.
Here's, here's my, my concern. My only concern is um and it has nothing to do with, it has nothing to do, it's not personal. My concern is if we do for one, we're gonna set a precedent, cause I can think of, I can think of one in my district where we rejected not once, not, but twice and we haven't reimbursed them. So what do you say to someone? You know, on a, on something like that, cause they've been through the process and so, I mean, then you're, i- it's, it's like you're, my concern is precedent, because then once, once we do that for one, we we have to do it for all.
We've done it, we've done it, but we rejected them twice on the same project, correct?
Yes.
Well, she followed, she followed the board's direction because the board told her the site that she'd worked on wasn't an acceptable site. And we have rebated fees before. So it's not a precedent we'd be setting. Um, I personally know of a couple that we've done that for.
Maybe the attorney, are are we within?
The, the board does have the ability to appropriate and and direct funds that are consistent with economic development. If this is encouraging a business to relocate from a previously, you know, inappropriate site, I would say it's within your discretion um to do so. But it it would have to be consistent with what the existing budget is for that money was paid in, you know, FY.
I, I think that um if we, if we go ahead and do this, I I think we should have two separate motions then. Just because of the fact that um I am in favor of your daycare. I am, um, I am, I'm concerned about precedent and so with the, with the refund. So I think if it was, the board would be okay. If this passes, that's fine. Two separate motions. So the.
Who made the second for our first motion?
We haven't made one. Well, I I made a motion to.
Yeah, we made, we have a motion to approve, but I don't know if anyone's seconded it.
We have a second, yeah.
We don't have a second.
In that case, I'll second our motion.
Okay, so we have the, so we're okay with two different motions?
Yes.
Yep. All right, so the first, the first motion is to approve uh special exception zero three two thousand twenty-four. Ladies Smith Business Park LLC.
And can I add, uh, along with, to include the conditions that were suggested by staff, which is to mark the curb side and park in lots?
Yes, that's already in there.
Would be in there.
Yes. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. All right, now we can do.
Sorry, as to the second motion, if the board would be so inclined as to table that motion till the next meeting, we could give you more detailed guidance on how that would work.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's fine. All right, um. We are uh to, so that takes care of both of our public hearings for the night. Uh we now go to unfinished business, uh the the rezoning of zero three two thousand twenty-three, the Carmel Church Station. Uh, so who is taking, who is taking this? Mr. Hughes, yep.
So, Mr. Chair, at the last meeting, you did table this matter uh seeking some additional information. Uh, the applicant has provided some additional information that was submitted in your packet and then also there was some additional information provided to you at your seats tonight. Um, there was a question about uh the, the density and the number of units uh in the overall project. I will just state that on this fifty-seven or on this two hundred and thirty, two hundred and fifty-six acre land bay that is the subject of this application, when you subtract the uh hundred and thirty-five acres that the applicant is proposing for the special district for the data center property and with the wetlands, the applicant, the remaining balance of developable area would be about fifty-seven acres. And so on that fifty-seven acres, they are enabled right now to do about fifteen hundred units. So i- it's gonna be a challenge from a physical development and they're limited to five stories, so they can't go an unlimited height. There's a limit of five stories in the property. So there, there will be somewhat of a challenge to try to get fifteen hundred units um on that remaining fifty-seven acres that is the balance. That fifty-seven acres will be subject to the remaining proffers. Um, so if there was any development to occur outside of the area that the applicant is, has identified, then they do have to go through all of the requirements of the existing proffers. So just to reiterate, the only exemption would be to the uh proffers with this amendment would be the area of the data centers. So I just wanted to make that clear. The balance of the property still is subject to the approved proffers of the Carmel Church Station.
May I ask him to clarify that? Yes, can you? Yeah, I was. Mr. Thomas, restate, I might answer your question.
Yeah, I I just wanted him, well, you can go ahead and restate it then.
As I understand it, a- approximately fifty-seven to sixty acres remaining would be the residual, not including wetlands. So they'll be limited by the density, basically l- less four hundred units as it is. It's maybe fifteen hundred units. And I think there's nineteen hundred approved right now.
Right.
Yeah.
So they're, they're, they're basically four hundred off anyway.
Right.
Okay.
And and that was the, the, the crux of my question is, I thought it was more than four hundred cause on that fifty-seven acres, they're not gonna be able to get the density that they want, so isn't a thousand more likely what they'd be doing?
Not sure I understand it.
They're, they're due for nineteen hundred.
Right.
Or maybe the applicant can tell us, is that, or the developer, is that what you came up for? Okay, well, tell me.
Yeah, so just on a, a land basis, right, um like Mr. Hughes said, we're taking up about half the acreage and then there are significant wetlands which are not allowed to be built on, which like you guys talked about leaves about sixty acres. On top of that, there is about, um, there's a twelve and a half percent of that land has to remain open space. Uh, there has to be an access road built. There are setback requirements. There are landscape requirements and there, like you said, there is a um five story cap on what can be built on in the remainder of the land. So on, on a very dense basis, it's, it's impractical, I would say, as a developer to build more than a thousand units there. It's not, that's not a written cap, but within the feasible of what's buildable within uh the regulations. Um, it's severely limited because of where we are as a project in the land bay. Sorry.
But, but theoretically, you're the developer for the data center and the owner of the property would still have that other sixty acres or so to do what they want, but your professional opinion as a developer says they probably go from nineteen hundred houses down to a thousand.
Yeah, they, they, I think on a land basis, you'd be challenged to build a thousand units there.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any um additional questions? Mr. Hughes, I I'll be honest with you and and we keep on saying it time and time again and it it keeps on happening time and time again. I mean, I showed up to the board meeting for different things and I, and I, I was thrown. I have more stuff thrown at me between four and six o'clock. Um, and you said you got an email from the developer today or someone at four, four o'clock. That's very frustrating. That is extremely frustrating to me, you know, that, that an email is coming in at four o'clock when we have a six o'clock meeting. Um, and and it's not just, I'm not picking on the particular person, the, i- i- it's happening quite frequently. And I think that we need to s- kind of address that, say, if we don't get it by a certain time, it 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 does not get included. Um, because it gives us no time to to look over a- additional information, so.
I, I mean, the board packet's put together on Thursday. If somebody wants to give us something additional, I think it should automatically defer to the next board meeting, cause wh- when I get here, I can't read anything that's sitting on the table. There, there's just not any time to do that. And we, we've got this creep going on again. We'd stopped it for a while.
If, if we could get a, a policy to that effect, because right now we're put in the position of this, this arrives and we, we don't want you not to have it.
Then, yes, then let's, let's get a policy on.
We have the freedom to defer things.
Okay, so do you wanna defer the number six until we get to read, till we get to read everything?
I'm, I'm just saying, I mean, we, we act like we're helpless little.
No, no, we, we get it, we, we get it piled on us and it's on the agenda and it's like, it's on the agenda, we've gotta do it. So, let me, okay, let me make sure, I'll make a motion, we defer a number six to the next board meeting.
I share your frustration.
Cause I'm just tired of this.
However, there are some things, we don't meet every two weeks. There's some, there's some times that we don't meet for over a month.
Right.
Well, that's rare.
Well, the month of July, the last nine years, we haven't met.
And we meet, I, I mean, we met, we have met incessantly, nonstop every week for six weeks now.
But this is not new information. This is a summary of what they said last.
I don't know, I don't know what it says because I haven't had a chance to look at it.
If you just look at the dates, the last date they'd have on here is January twenty twenty-four. So it's, it's nothing new.
Then why is it on the table?
I, I'm just a- averse to setting a policy that we are expected to to go by when we have the capability of deferring something that we are not comfortable voting on or addressing because we, we've got information late. That, that's, that's my, that's my thoughts.
Well, let's, let's, and I hear Mr. Underwood saying that, let's, I mean, we, we can bring that up to the next board meeting, so at the next board meeting, we can discuss it. I just don't like getting stuff, I'm, I'm not saying we're helpless. I just don't like getting stuff on and put in front of me when you, when you add, and it's not just this. We have multiple things put in front of us that um when we show up at five o'clock.
Like, I would, I would make, suggested that we make it a request to be on the next board's agenda.
Yes, I, and I, I that's, let's just, let's go with that then, the next board meeting and then let's discuss if we, if we need to have that as some sort of policy. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, in our board packet, there are three paragraphs on the load letter. Is that true, Mr. Hughes? Three paragraphs. The attorney emailed them to me. Three paragraphs, correct?
Mr. Hughes, can you speak up, please? We, we can't hear you.
Yes, I, yes.
Have you ever seen the load letter, Mr. Hughes?
I have not.
Has the applicant seen, seen a load letter before? Since you're here, I'll, I'll ask him.
The load letter, um, the documentation that we have from Rapid Hanuk is in the packet as evidence of power service.
Well, I have the application that's supposed to be filled out by everybody who requests power from Rapid Hanuk or Dominion that doesn't have power that. by everybody who requests power from Rappahannock or Dominion that doesn't have power that they've got to request it. And it's three pages. So if there's three paragraphs for your load letter, I don't know why I've had constituents who have had to develop endless paperwork and go through nonstop questioning by, by the co-op and by Dominion to get power and what they've paid to get it.
Could, could I provide some clarity on the power connection process that we've gone through?
Sure.
Okay. Um, in, in May of last year, we submitted paperwork to Rappahannock, um, at which point Rappahannock submitted an engineering-only load study to Dominion. At that point, Dominion studied whether they could serve the site or not. So again, we submitted, um, paperwork, and that paperwork included an approximate load ramp for how much power we would need and when we would need it, and where the substation parcel could be.
Okay, stop there for a second. When you would need it, so when are they saying you'll get power? Cause you're asking for three hundred megawatts.
Correct. So, um, that came in their response to that engineering-only load study that we paid a fee for. And Dominion said it could take approximately three to three and a half years to serve the site. That's, that's not necessarily a commitment by them, but that was an email that we got in response to that load study. Um, once we got that information, um, and they, they did indicate that it would, at that point, that it would come from the two thirty lines. That's, that's the, basically the extent of the information we had at that point, and we got that in October of, uh, twenty twenty-three. So in October of twenty twenty-three is when Rappahannock also provided us the evidence of power service in the packet. Um, and at that point, they submitted a delivery point request to Dominion. That Dominion, that delivery point request, um, basically kicked off Dominion's engineering studies for the substation. So ba- once that was submitted, they engineered the substation on the parcel to say, this is where it is. This is the equipment on that substation. At no point in that process was routing discussed with us at all. Um, so the next part of the process for us is to work out an agreement, um, with Rappahannock, which we're significantly far along on, which as Ms. Brock said last time, commits us to, uh, tens of millions of dollars to design and construct that substation. Now, because we knew the routing was a concern of the county, in January, I coordinated a meeting with county staff and Dominion and Rappahannock. And we all sat down before any routing had been produced by Dominion at all. And the county then and subsequently expressed their concerns about the routing to Dominion, um, before any routing is produced, which to date it hasn't been. Um, Dominion does tell us that in some time in this month, they anticipate going out to, uh, property holder, holders and agencies that could be affected by potential routes and have public meetings. And once they do that, they will select a number of routes to go to the SCC with. So that has not occurred yet. Um, that's been the power process that we've gone through to date.
But that power process gets kicked off by our approval, correct?
The, sorry, the, the process has started, but the contract, we, like, we wouldn't sign a contract with Rappahannock and start paying tens of millions of dollars for that substation to be designed and constructed unless the board approves the project.
But our approval, and, and this is my point, our approval kicks off that whole process and the routing and everything that goes with it. I'm, just wanna be clear.
Dominion has started designing the route. Um, so if we don't sign the agreement with Rappahannock, they'll stop.
You didn't answer my question.
I'm sorry.
Our process. If, if we don't approve it, none of this happens, correct?
Correct.
If we approve it, if we, because what's gonna happen is, once we approve it, we, we're all agreeing that once we approve it, that we're, we're okay with the whole routing process and what's gotta take place. But it, we instantiate that.
Yes, the county has a seat at the, it, the county can contribute towards the routing process. Correct.
I apologize for saying co-op lady.
Ms. Brock.
Ms. Brock.
Ms. Brock.
But I, I just wanna be clear, because I, I know that we don't condemn property. That was stated at the last meeting, the county doesn't condemn property. But our approval of this project downstream has Dominion condemning property, correct?
No.
You won't know that until it happens.
Well, no, 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 we know, we know that power's gotta go there.
Yes.
And we know that the, what's going there now isn't sufficient. That's, that's a known fact.
That is correct.
So if we approve this, that we're saying that we're, that we, we know that the next step is condemnation of property. It's my only point, because the only way to get power there.
I don't agree. The, the next step is to work with.
Well, well, okay, they gotta purchase property to bring power lines through where, where nobody suspects power lines are gonna be. Today, if you lived there, you would not have any clue your, the power lines were coming. That's my only point. It's six miles, correct?
It, the one route is six miles.
Okay, but it's, it's at least six miles.
Uh, so, so six miles is, uh, from what Dominion has shared with us, because the county brought up that beating the project from the south would be the county's preferred way, impacts fewer landowners. That's actually a little bit longer of a route, uh, on the order of six miles. Whereas the, as the crow flies, it's closer to two and a half miles to the power line, uh, from, from the substation site.
Okay.
So, so when you design routes, what do you take into consideration? Is it, is it merely distance from point A to point B?
No. Um, so this is, this is the subject, actually, of the call we had with county staff and Dominion and Rappahannock in January. Um, and Dominion could elaborate on this much better than I could, but I, I don't design the routes.
I understand.
Right, designs that route, and what, what they've expressed to us is they do their best, A, to not bifurcate any plots, right? They don't, you know, Mr. Hughes brought up, you know, it's a growth area. We don't wanna be bisecting plots, um, to which Dominion replied, they do their best to avoid that. They do their best to use existing rights of way. And through the public process and county engagement, they try to select the route that's least impactful from an environmental standpoint, from residential standpoint, um, and a host of other concerns.
So basically, w- we have to, again, put our faith in that they're going to do their best to, to ensure that the conditions that they say they're gonna consider, they consider.
Correct. And when, when the process kicks off, if, if you do not like a route, show up loudly to their meetings, right? Like, that's, that's how, that's how it ends up.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I have a question. Mr., Mr. Hughes? Uh, when we, when we approved the Madam Mead project, the, the, the big one that we've approved, did, was the route already, was the route already there for that, that huge one? Was it already in place? Or are they gonna have to do the same, same sys- same thing that we're talking about?
No, there's a two thirty line on that property.
There's a two thirty line already on that property.
Yes.
Just because there's a two thirty line doesn't mean we'll carry that project and we can talk to Rappahannock Electric, because I believe they're gonna have to run an additional, additional power to that facility, which is what's going on at Mr. Black's residence right now, is they've got to upgrade that. Just because there's a two hundred and thirty line, two hundred and thirty volt line, the K-volt line there now, does not mean that is sufficient. Everybody claims that when they come see us, we have sufficient power. There is power, whether that's sufficient or not, cause it's not gonna give you three hundred megawatts. I- it's not gonna do that. Am I correct?
Yes, in that particular instance, the way I understand it, you can serve some of that load. But what they try very hard to do, and we do as well at Rappahannock, we try to use existing rights of way and rebuild those lines rather than get new right of way. And in that particular instance, the right of way is already there, so they would just be rebuilding what's there.
When you say rebuild, it's usually a, a larger structure. Mr. Black, I think, can address what's going on. Cause it's going on in his backyard right now.
Yes, and I've seen that as well, cause it's got, it goes over Indian Acres. It's, it's, yeah. Uh, that's in Spotsylvania County, but, um, it can. What they like to do is be able to build the structure large enough for future use. Um, the SCC does not always allow that, um, and then rebuilding, um, tearing down and.
But I, I just wanted to spell the rumor, there's a two hundred and thirty kilovolt line there now that's sufficient power, cause it's, it's nowhere near could.
There is for at least the first substation.
How big's the first sub? Well, that's Madam Mead, it doesn't matter. But I'm just saying, i- i- for what they're planning there, that's gonna require, I mean, that's nowhere near enough.
Mrs. Brock, I have a, a question. You, you've been through a lot of these. Have you been through a lot of these, like, as far as building lines? You've been with a company for a long time, correct?
Yes.
How often is condemnation come into this? Like, in other words, I, I would imagine your first, your first order of business is for purchasing, correct? Working with a landowner for some sort of agreement?
For us, we try every which way to not condemn. Sometimes you get stuck with that, but I've been there, it'll be twenty-nine years this year, and I have, we have never condemned, as far as I know. Now, we're not Dominion, um, so I can't, I can't say for Dominion, but I know they try very hard as well. And I have been in some of their open houses where they've ended up not doing what they were going to do. But, you know, once this got, once the sites are selected, that once these, um, routes are selected, um, they come up with one or two, and then they go to the SCC, and the SCC picks. And that's kinda, you know.
We, we have real experience with the SCC on the water and sewer side.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Mr. Black, again, can tell you his.
Yeah, I heard that last, last time.
It, it is, it is never, never a good thing.
This is a long-term question.
Yes, I have a question on the comment that was made earlier by a citizen about electric bills. And I know you're putting in money and you need to have money back, and I also know that you're allowed to charge for new energy, uh, power plants when you build them, that everybody gets a subcharge on their, uh, bills. How is that calculated? Does it go to the area, or is it a blanket charge when you all do new projects? And do you, what can we expect with these centers as they go in? Do they affect?
The, the difference is, Rappahannock Electric is a member-owned. We don't make a profit. Everything, if we make a profit, it goes back to you in capital credits. So we, our rates are done differently than an investor-owned utility like Dominion. Um, and we are a distribution electric cooperative, which means, I, I kinda say we're like the, the BJ's Wholesale Club. We buy it at wholesale and sell it at retail. Um, so we build, most of what we do is building substations and the distribution lines that go up and down the streets, and then we serve your home. Um, Dominion also owns the entire power grid that we get our delivery of power from. Um, so I, I do, I can't comment really on how their rates are, are done. But what I can tell you is that, you know, if something is being built specifically for one thing, uh, you know, there, I, I believe they have the same reason to charge for it as we do.
I'm sorry, so this project will be, um, powered by REC?
We will bu- build the distribution portion, we'll build the substation and, um, serve this load, yes. But the transmission is gonna be Dominion.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, um, Mr. Thomas? Ms. Brock, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's okay.
Nothing for you.
No.
And I know you started as a very young girl to be there twenty-nine years.
Well.
I'm still apologizing, so.
And fifteen years before that somewhere else.
You sold on yourself. Where in your application does it say this is an air-cooled facility?
Um, that is discussed in the proffers. That is in, I believe, I'm looking at it here, uh, utilities, reduction of needs. Yeah, it's in proffers four D.
Okay. Something happened, I, I, I did something wrong. I did a search for air, and it didn't come back with anything, so, okay.
Yeah, um, so the, the, the technology is, is closed circuit. It's not evaporative, so it, you know, we didn't, we didn't use the term air-cooled. It says non-evaporative.
It's a closed loop.
Correct. So the, the air-cooled chillers are on the roof, and those contain a refrigerant. And so basically, the chilled water on a closed loop goes into the building. Uh, cold, uh, fans blow air over it, and it cools the data center. The warm, uh, water is pumped to the roof, and it goes into the chiller where it hits, hits a heat exchanger. And then that refrigerant gets condensed, and then, or it gets compressed, uh, and so heated. And so fans cool that refrigerant down, and then it is allowed to expand again where it's cool and provides the cooling again. So at no point are we venting to the atmosphere, which really reduces our water intake.
Well, the point is, there's no strain on the water system because it's air-cooled theoretically, or closed-loop air-cool.
That's, that's correct. Um, you, in the, in the information I provided to you late, I apologize. The, um, you know, our engineers have shared that that's basically the two data centers we're showing on the generalized development plan will consume less water than, uh, ten homes.
Actually, what we got on our desk was al- already in our packet.
Okay.
Except for the history part.
Okay.
You know, so we did have the, the chart you said. All right, that, that, that was my questions. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions, comments? Otherwise, I guess we'll be taking a vote.
Actually, one quick question. These are, uh, cool, cooling towers.
Say that again?
No cooling towers or cooling towers.
No, they're just air-cooled chillers on the roof. Correct.
All right, how does the, uh, board want to deal with this item? I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we, um, approve RZ zero three twenty twenty-three Carmel Church Station North LLC owner, ADP Carmel Church Data Hub.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll say. I have a, I have a motion by Mr. Underwood and a second by Mr. Forehand. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero. Okay, so it is a unanimous vote. All right, we are moving on to, um, number, uh, we did seven, right? So we're, uh, we're number eight, the finalized estimated cost.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, this topic is to discuss about the addition of two new tennis courts and four pickleball courts at the Caroline County High School, what we call the County Park. Um, as you know, at the last meeting, we talked about some pricing, uh, and the board gave us authorization to move forward to secure, uh, actual quotes. Um, the quotes did come back a little bit higher for a few reasons. Um, in talking with a few of the board members, one of the things that was brought up was, uh, the possibility of adding a pavilion, um, at that site since it is far away. Um, so we did add a pavilion. Um, we've also added some picnic tables and some benches in that area, so that kinda drove up the pricing on that. Also, uh, another thing that we've done since the original conception, uh, was actually installing a sidewalk from the parking lot um, between the tennis courts and concrete steps going down the embankment to the actual site. So that kinda drove up our prices. And the last thing that really kinda changed was the lighting. So that kind of drove up our prices. And the last thing that really kind of changed was the lighting. Um, the lighting was a little bit higher than we thought, um, because of the location uh and the type of lighting for the the pickleball courts. So that did drive our costs up slightly. Um, so the total project cost is seven hundred ninety nine thousand four hundred and forty dollars. Um, with that, currently we have three hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty six thousand dollars available. From the portion of the cigarette tax revenue. Um, so the board would need to designate those funds as well as an additional four hundred and eighty five thousand five hundred and forty. Five hundred and four dollars that would be taken from the undesignated general fund balance. Um, with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. Each of you should have a full scale kind of layout of what this would look like.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Chair, Mr. Forehand?
I'm Mr. Shebel. Um, the graphic looks like eight pickleball courts.
It's, they're actually sideways. So the blue are the playing areas. So it's the, there's two blues make one court. So there's a division in between.
Okay, I just, it it's, it'll be small next. I thought that's not the scale. But I think it'll. I think there's a line in there. Anyway, it's not that big a deal. It's not gonna be any bigger than than four anyway.
Right, and and originally we had looked at extending and then putting some courts between the current tennis courts and the water tower. Um, however, there's a new high pressure uh gas line that runs through there now, so that was not picked up originally. So that's why we had to move the location um down to where it is now um because of that. And if you actually go any further, if you've been out there, um, the the ground does taper off significantly after those tennis courts. So trying to uh install more would involve bringing a lot of fill in.
Um, the. The lights for the two additional. And this is more for the board that isn't, in my mind, isn't critical. Um, because we have, you know, we don't fill up the four at night. And by having six, it alleviates some of our pressure to have stuff at night. So if the board felt inclined to cut this to some degree, um, that's, that's where I would cut it. If. That's just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, that was, that was exactly my thought. Um, I don't know who's playing pickleball during the winter time. But in the summertime, it's light eight, nine o'clock, so.
The the lights, I I like the pickleball lights. I like the lights on the two additional tennis courts is what I was referring to.
Oh, not, not light the tennis? I was thinking of not lighting anything, but.
No, I mean, I, I will, I don't know about, I haven't really been there. But I know that at the basketball courts over in Ladysmith, the lights are used all the time at night. But we have four that are currently illuminated. We would just be making it six, that's all.
Yeah.
Well, for the, you're talking for the tennis courts, correct?
Correct.
The tennis courts would allow the tennis team to play longer and you'd, you'd be able to use the tennis courts if if a match early in the season goes longer. Because then you'd have, you would have, um, you know, you wouldn't really solve the issue they're having now.
And you'd be able to play more matches because you're adding two courts.
Mr. Black, not to speak on behalf of the schools, um, but I am a father of a student who played tennis. Um, and one of the issues that they had was because we only have four currently. They would have to play four. They always have a team of six. So typically they would play four and then your one through four and then your five, six play, and then you get into your doubles playing. Typically, there's only four doubles teams. So the problem that we have at our location is, and no one else has, most of them don't have lights and they're not used because you're able to compete. Lot faster because you're able to do all six and then you're done. So typically you would end up having the main court. You'd have six, so all your one through six would play and then you could do your doubles. And if you needed to, you could turn them on on just the four courts and it would probably be sufficient ninety nine percent of the time um for that program. So if you wanted to save money, you know, you could save it from the tennis court if you wanted to cut some money.
And we have, we have lights at the pickleball courts, right?
So there is, there is money to put lights on a pickleball courts.
Why do you have to have lights?
I sort of like having the extra lights. If we're gonna have a pavilion and we're gonna have um the tables and the. You know, the seating area, you know, people walking around or after hours hanging around, I'd like them to be seeable. Hopefully there's enough light that we don't have any issue down there um with with after hour activities. And we can put these lights on timers or.
They are on timers, so um they're currently set. I can actually turn them on from my cell phone and turn them off as well. Um, but they're on timers, so we've got them set up uh and they shut off at eleven o'clock automatically, so they will not go past eleven o'clock at night. So we can change that times. The ones in Ladysmith were on a timer. They actually shut off sooner because they were in a residential area. As this is just around the school and there's no residents, these were on later.
Right.
But if it became an issue, we could always change that time.
I. I'm ready for.
Ask one question. Mr. Shebel, did you say the three, um, four eighty something would come out of the general fund? Is that correct?
Yes, four hundred and eighty five thousand five hundred and four dollars.
And the other three hundred is from the cig- from the cigarette tax?
Yes, sir.
Does that bring that to a zero balance then?
Uh, yes, it does.
For for now, okay.
Yeah.
For for the the half of it, that's, that's reserved for parks and rec related.
Okay, got you. Okay. But what's the other? What's, what's the residual balance? I didn't mean to get you up this. What's that?
No, she's.
Mr. Underwood, I believe you're asking for the residual balance that's left after we take the three thirteen and then the four eighty five.
Yes.
There would be no residual balance, so we would be taking the one hundred thousand that was reserved for fiscal year twenty three. From the um fund balance that was reserved for parks and rec. And so far, we would have collected two hundred and thirteen thousand that could be reserved for parks and rec.
Thirteen.
Yes, sir.
Got you.
And the remaining balance would be what would need to be approved and adopted for the next year.
Great, thank you. That's what I need to know.
I have one question.
Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Shebel. Have we, um, I I I noticed the angle of the pickleball courts and the pavilion and all that. Have we done any solar studies? In other words, have you figured out the direction of the sun so when you're playing tennis or pickleball, it's not in your eyes?
Um, I don't believe we have.
Yeah, from the angle of the pickleball, that may be something you want to consider. I mean, I know this isn't the final draft, or I hope it's not the final draft.
Well, this is it. You say go, we're gonna start. Contractor's ready to start.
Well, look at the angle, because that's all I'm saying.
That's something we definitely, yeah, we might need to turn that a little bit. There's a little bit of room to turn that. We do need to be cautious of the outfield, the softball, and then the berm on the other side. Um, I know the tennis courts are good.
Yeah.
Because the sun does, you know, you can see it even here. So i- it, the sun is actually shining in the evening from where the water tower is. So it's shining from that direction.
Mm hmm. Mr. Mr. Shebel?
Yes.
My, and adding to that, my only of concern, are we gonna have like a net or some? Someone's playing softball and they had a bomb. Um, you know, and I'm sure the person playing pickleball doesn't have a glove on waiting to. Yeah.
There, there's a fence.
Yeah.
Right.
What's that?
The pickleball is fenced in.
How tall is the fence?
Uh, it's at least eight foot, could be ten. I think it's eight foot high.
Okay.
You're not hitting a ball, softball, over that fence and over another eight foot fence, four hundred and fifty feet out.
Uh, how far is that from home plate?
It's softball regulations. I don't know that that off the top of my head.
I'm gonna bet that Aaron Judge can't hit that.
Okay, all right, as long as you're, as as long as we think that's.
Really hit this. He had that, he'd be in the pros.
Right, yeah. That's the girl softball.
Yeah, it's sixty foot bases and.
Yeah.
Well.
Thank you. That's all, that's all I'm saying. That's not the, the, the bigger one is, is the, the bigger field is the one, the one on the right. That one is only like, that's the softball, softball, what's like two, two ten. And so then what I'm saying is, yes, some of these guys who play softball, they can, they can mash. And so I, you know, that.
Yeah, I don't play softball.
For batting practice and stuff when they, yeah, when they're, when they're, you know, that's what the prac, the field used to warm up on.
That's what I'm doing, the big field softball.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm saying when they'll warm up on the smaller field and all I'm saying.
Up a net like they do for goalpost.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, uh, so what are we, uh, are we okay for a motion now?
Yes.
So who wants to make it? I'll make a motion. We um, let's see how we phrase this. We allocate seven hundred ninety nine thousand four hundred and forty dollars for the construction of two illuminated tennis courts. And four illuminated pickleball courts with other uh similar amenities such as benches and a small pavilion.
I'll second.
Oh, okay.
You happy?
Yeah. I have a motion and a uh, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Just to, just for clarity, we don't have to designate where this came from, or can we just reference the uh?
I think if you reference the memo, it would be fine.
Reference the memo regarding.
It's expensive.
The uh funding.
Funding sources, yes.
Okay, uh, next one, next up we have um unfinished business. Uh, we have the grass cutting and litter pickup.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shebel, this is you again.
Yes, sir. Um, when I was up in in looking at the manicure mowing that we do in the Ladysmith area. Um, the board had said that they would like to know what it would cost to do additional mowings throughout the entire county um through VDOT. So I worked with VDOT um and came up with the pricing of the current contract, um, which is laid out in my memo. Um, you could do, um, the contract would need to be uh discussed with the actual contractor um to make sure he is willing to do the additional work. Um, VDOT seems to think that they would. Uh, they could do just trash removal. They could do just mowing or both. Um, we have laid that out. It is a total cost of mowing uh and trash pickup for per event is a hundred and eighty five thousand three hundred and ten dollars and two cents. So that would uh mow the entire county one additional time. Currently, VDOT does that twice a year now. Um, so if you wanted to pick up an additional time, and and then I've also just uh to make it easy for everyone, if you wanted to do it. Two additional times for a total of four or four additional times for six, we've laid those numbers out. So um, that was informational items for you. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Shebel, before I go to the uh board with uh questions, I do want to say that um after two years. The Ladysmith intersection, the curb and gutter, I think a couple of weeks ago was mowed and weeded and it looked amazing. I went through there and I was like, thank the Lord. It doesn't look like this weed's growing up through everywhere. It looked, it looked really nice. And uh it was for the first time in a while, so I I I really appreciate. Um, I think you said it was the contractor who ended up doing that, but gosh, it looks, it looks so much better than having tall weeds that are a foot long and dead. Growing up out of the uh, out of the drains and and curbs, so thank you for that.
And I would say the second best looking place would be in front of the high school, so, because that's mowed as well on a regular basis.
Right.
Looks really good and and really helps traffic as the people are coming in and out of that location.
So thank you. All right, how does the board want to deal with this?
I am, those are big figures.
Those are big numbers.
Um, I just can't support that. We just spent recreational money. We've already got a contract for our commercial area on two oh seven. I'm happy with that.
Now, Mr. Shebel, there are safety areas where VDOT has to mow more often than they do normally.
Yeah, they've got a few locations that they have that are key areas and intersections that they have to mow more often.
One of those specifically is Rogers and Clark where it meets two oh seven.
Yes, and Page Road and Route one, I know is another location.
I mean, you can't see the oncoming cars, even though there's a merge lane, so.
Correct.
They will still continue to do those locations more frequently.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so what do we, how do we want to, do we want to motion just to uh, or do we just want to just table this? Or do we want to reject it completely? How do we want to? Yeah.
I think it's too much, Mr. Chairman. I, I think we should just table, come back and revisit. Um, that's my thought. I mean, there's a lot of money.
Because currently, right now, um, we're doing kind of the major areas between ninety five and 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 Route one and so forth. And and whoever's doing it's done, done a good job so far, so.
That's almost a hundred thousand dollars and see how, how they go and maybe next year we expand a little bit.
They've done a good job. I think our major highway inner where the people come off the highway. Um, that needs to be done and is being done and and it looks way better than it has, so um I think we will just, so do we just want to just take no action?
I think it's good.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, also uh got a phone call from Mr. Bates. Um, and that we will be allowed as the county to be able to pick up on the exit ramps themselves. Um, being able to go down the ramps to certain um, um, certain location that they designate. Um, so we'll be starting to do those with our litter pickup as well as in Carmel Church and Ladysmith areas.
I had talked to him as well about that.
Yeah, so.
I think that's.
We need another permit. We're hoping we could add it to the existing one, but since that's on the limited access, it's a different permit.
Yeah, because they, they do a good job during the summer because they're mowing and they pick up before they mow. But then when you go, they don't pick up trash basically from November through probably March. It goes without a trash pickup at all because they're not mowing.
Yeah, and if we could get no truck parking on the ramps, it would be immensely helpful because a lot of stuff comes out of those locations. Especially if you're in Carmel Church going southbound, the trucks back up there and there, there's all kinds of stuff that gets thrown out.
And that would be, I think that's a lot of the trash that you're getting on the ramps is from the trucks parking there and throwing.
I think they just open it up and throw everything out.
So, Mr. Shebel, if I heard you correctly, we're gonna be able to start picking up the ramps, you say? Is that all of the interstate ramps?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Carmel Church.
When, when is that going to?
Working, waiting on VDOT to send me the correct paperwork to be able to get the permit in place. As soon as we get that, we'll put that on the list to start picking that up.
When you, I just mentioned that at our meeting that we didn't have the, the permission to do it. So when you get that, let me know and I can pass that on.
Yes, sir.
That we now do have the ability to, and the permission to pick up the right of ways on the interstate.
Just the ramps.
The ramps, right.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And yeah, and also, uh, I do think that we need to talk to uh Sheriff Moser about those trucks that are parking there. Because I think a lot of that trash is, uh.
There's no, there's not a sign now. We need a no parking sign so somebody can enforce that. There's nothing there now.
Yes, and so.
So we really need VDOT to do.
Yes, so we're, if there was only something that could record the people doing it.
Yeah.
Device.
It's strange.
That would be admissible in court that we could take and show them.
Yeah.
If only they existed.
Yeah.
I'm so familiar.
Yes, so um if we could uh get Sheriff Moser in here also to discuss that as well about, I mean, once we get the no parking signs up. Because I think that would be a major deterrents uh as well to some of the problems that we have with littering um on those. Uh, in the areas that we have massive amounts of litter.
So I'll start talking with Mr. Bates, but that might need to be something the board would have to um ask as well to make sure that gets done.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, if we can move on now to the item number ten, which is the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget. Uh, Mr. Parton?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm gonna introduce this and Ms. Morgan can fill in any gaps that I've left. Um, so we've placed on the budget for tonight, uh, consideration uh of adoption of the fiscal year two thousand twenty four, twenty five budget. Uh, which covers the period July first, uh, twenty twenty four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. And uh, Mrs. Morgan has provided a document in the board packet uh that itemizes the proposed uh increases to the budget. Um, that we've identified since the work session on April thirtieth, I believe. At its May seventh work session, the board identified two new uh full time positions that. Uh, staff believe that you, you wanted to uh to add to the twenty five budget as priorities. Uh, that being a deputy director of public utilities and a deputy or assistant director or something along that vein for uh economic development. Staff hasn't had adequate time to uh to evaluate those positions and come up with job descriptions, particularly in Mr. Cully's absence. Um, so what we've done is uh included what we believe to be adequate funds to be able to hire the positions. And and FY twenty five is sort of a placeholder uh for the time being. With the idea that we'll return at a later date after we've had time to develop the actual job descriptions. And the board can discuss it more and and decide uh what those positions may look like. And and uh that they, they do in fact want to proceed at that time. There's also a request um to add forty thousand dollars from the uh fifteenth District Court Services Unit. And I discovered this afternoon that I failed to um include a memo from Natasha Cheek, who's the uh director. Uh, I have copies, um, but I'll tell you essentially what it says. Um, uh, the request is to continue electronic monitoring services uh for juvenile offenders. Uh, in lieu of placing them in secure detention like, like the Merrimack Center that we belong to. placing them in secure detention like, like the Merrimack Center that we belong to in James City County, which is certainly much more expensive to do. Uh, this is a service that the state used to provide, um, and, uh, the Department of Juvenile Justice, Mrs. Cheek has said, uh, is no longer willing to provide this service, uh, and, uh, they're not going to use state-funded positions to, to provide it, and therefore that they deem it to be now a local responsibility. So that service is, is, uh, currently provided through the, uh, Rappahannock Office on Youth, I believe, and the forty thousand is to continue that, uh, in FY twenty-five. Um, it's an estimate of the funds that would be needed, uh, and, uh, any, any funds that we don't use would remain with Caroline County. Um, and again, I can pass out the memo and I apologize for not including that, but, um, I think that covers what I wanted to cover. Ms. Morgan, did you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Parton. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the only thing that I would like to add is that, um, what this then brings are, um, transfer from the undesignated fund balance to what that number would be, um, currently prior to the increases, um, of the items that are posted in your, uh, report, we were at one million nine hundred fourteen thousand, six seventy-nine. Um, there is an additional thirty-two thousand, six twenty-nine that we'll, we'll need an appropriation for from our closed session tonight. Um, the two positions that Mr. Parton discussed, the Deputy Director of Economic Development and the Deputy Director of Public Utilities, I've included both numbers, whereas if you want to have those positions earmarked for July one, or if you wanted to have those positions earmarked for January one of twenty twenty-five. So if we take that into consideration with the three hundred thirteen thousand, nine thirty-six that will be taken from the reserve fund balance, what you would be looking for from the undesignated fund balance would be either two million eight hundred forty-six thousand, seven seventy-six, or two million seven hundred twenty-one thousand, nine thirty-two, and any other, um, additions or subtractions that you guys deem necessary. And that's all I have.
What, what is?
Miss?
Can I ask?
Mrs. Long.
Last year, how much did we have to, do you remember how much were you, you were here, how much we had to take out of our reserves?
None. We actually added over five million dollars to our fund balance.
That's what I thought. Okay. I just was hoping I was mistaken.
No, ma'am. We, we budgeted two point seven million for this current fiscal year. Um, and we had budgeted, uh, out of the fund balance the year prior as well, but we did not take any money out of the fund balance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the amended, twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Adoption of the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Um, I, I am going to completely disagree with that. Uh, before we have a motion, I would actually like to have maybe a secondary motion. Um, we, we seem to be.
We already have a motion on the floor, Ms. Chairman.
I'm, all right, I'm going to make my, my statement then, um, before, before, uh, last year, we gave to the schools one point three million dollars in new, for new money. This year in the budget, eight hundred thousand. Could you imagine telling fire and rescue, I don't know what we give fire and rescue, but can you imagine telling fire and rescue if we gave them, whatever the base was, I'll throw a number out there, I don't know what we give fire and rescue, but cutting them back from last year to this year, we would never do that. And this year, we're giving the schools five hundred thousand less. And we had five million extra last year. We had five million extra. We don't want to do a tax increase, but then we don't want to, and because we said we got plenty of money, and then we're not willing to give the schools more money. I asked in an email for a dollar bill to be broken out as far as what localities, percent localities to give education. We were the only locality of the eight localities that our administration asked for. We were the only locality that had publics, public safety above education. How many more employees do we have in education? How many more do we have? We talk all the time about schools and the need for better schools. There is a point in time from this board that we have to trust our schools. We have to trust them to believe that the money that we are going to give them goes to the right thing. The, last year, we gave them one point three. They returned when they said, hey, they get new state money. They returned two point three, two point four, or, uh, two hundred thousand, I'm sorry, to us. They returned that money. Mr. Forehand tonight, rightfully so, in the last meeting, asked for, we need pickleball courts. Agree one hundred percent. I'm all on board. I have never said, and personally, I've never fought against that. I think that's a great idea, Mr. Forehand had. We just spent seven hundred and forty-four thousand ten minutes ago. We think we have it. Fine. Mr. Thomas and Mr. Underwood, you guys want a fire station down on Carmel Church? One hundred percent needed. I never fought you on it. I agreed with you one hundred percent, and to do that, we needed twenty, how many firefighters, Ms. Chief? Twenty, twenty-two, and we're adding seven more in this budget to, uh, which I know half of them are paid for in Milford. So we're, we're adding twenty-two, twenty-nine. We, we never even questioned it because they're needed.
Not Milford, Ms. Chairman.
I, I mean, uh, Carmel Church and then, but then we took, this, uh, we're doing, um, no, Upper Carolina, we're adding seven firefighters, correct? We're adding seven firefighters in this budget, correct, that are half are paid for for two years, correct? All right, so we don't question that because Upper Carolina's getting seven new firefighters on top of, on top of whatever, um, what we've added down in Carmel Church. We added a new fire station in Sparta right now that doesn't have any firefighters, but we're just relying on volunteers. Well, there was some debate about it, but it was roughly a five million fire station. It's going to be needed? Absolutely. No question that down the road, but the thing of it is with that fire station, we're going to have to add real full-time firefighters to that fire station eventually. There's no question. We're talking about a fire station in Port Royal. Needed. Absolutely needed. And when that fire station in Port Royal comes, we're going to need firefighters. No question about it. The sheriff has mentioned to us, hey, you know, we're getting double stacked calls. We're, we're getting, this is the first time because our population increases. And here we go. We're having a situation where we're having to prioritize calls. It's going to come to us in the next few years because of our growth. We've added eleven hundred homes since two thousand twenty, I think the number was that I got the other day. And it's going to come to us at some point, or he's going to come to us and say, you know what? I'm going to need ten new police officers. I'm going to need twenty new deputies, whatever, and we're going to say, he's going to give us the data, and we're going to rightfully say, hey, you know what? You need it because the safety of our citizens is important. I have asked for money to fight Aqua. And the board has said, you know what? That's it. That's rightful. That, that's a, that's a, you know, a, a company that's taking advantage of its citizens. And the board has rightfully given the money to fight Aqua. I, for me, I guess I don't understand when the, when the school board comes to us and says, we are growing and we need money for teachers because they've got a salary study too. That's another thing. We did a salary study. Now, the salary study wasn't done very well. I admit there was lots of flaws in our salary study, and I don't think we should ever use that company again. But we did agree that we would fund the salary study. So county employees are going to be getting the steps plus the three percent, whatever we're agreeing to. So when it comes to us, we have the money to do what we want, yet when the schools come to us, we say we're on the same team because we're one Caroline. When the schools come to us, it has to be frustrating, and I know everyone says, oh, all I care about is the schools. If I only cared about the schools, I would fight everyone else on everything that you guys want to do. That's not true. I want to work with the schools, and I understand we are a growing county. And I remember for years and years and years, I remember my salary being frozen in Spotsylvania. And I know I don't teach in Spotsylvania, and I know that, the, the, what the teachers face, uh, in Caroline and what the teachers face in Caroline is different than Spotsylvania, but there's one general thing. We have to be able to keep up competitive salaries, number one. And number two, I think during that time, the thing that was most frustrating to me during the time when we were frozen is the fact that my class sizes kept on going up and going up and going up. And I remember having classes of thirty kids. And it was, it, the burnout factor was insane, and you guys know, I, I am not an elementary school teacher, and I think I have it a lot easier than an elementary school teacher does. The, the immense pressure that is on those elementary school teachers when you have a class full of young kids. It's easier for me to do, and it's hard, and when I have a class of thirty, so I can't even imagine what it's like for an elementary school teacher. So when they come to us and say, hey, we want to do, we need extra money, they laid it out, Dr. Calverick laid it out in an email to us on Friday. We need this much extra money because we want to do, the bus drivers make them full-time. That allows them to get benefits for VRS. That allows them, um, the other benefits that, that they are not allowed right now. Um, in the budget, there's actually this thing I've been, I have been personally saying to Dr. Calverick in the schools for a long time. I've been saying, we need actual teachers in the classroom. If your numbers are growing.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, you have stopped me many, many times when I have done this. There are five of us sitting here and we've listened to you as chairman now.
Yeah, I am.
Way more, way more time than you give any of us.
Mr. Sealy, I, I, I have never stopped you. I have never stopped you from anything. My, my comments.
Video tape.
I will, I will make my comments. If you want to not fund the schools, then that's your prerogative.
You haven't given anybody any opportunity to say anything.
I'm finishing. It was, we had a motion and, we have a motion. The motion was made. Motion and a second. So it's discussion time, so I'm taking my time discussing. If you want to speak five minutes, you perfectly can. Okay? But, I mean, the bottom line is, we need to actually, I would really like the board to consider giving them more money to fund some of the stuff that we have. They asked for one point five. I thought it was perfectly legitimate why they were asking for the one point five. I even asked Dr. Hubbard. I asked Dr. Hubbard the other day. I said, Dr. Hubbard, is this legitimate? I asked him at the, is this legitimate one point five million? Is there a flaw? Is this legitimate? Is it going to be used for what you say you're going to use for? All I can go on his word, and he said yes. So I don't think that giving the schools eight hundred thousand dollars makes us as a board look good, and it shows any sort of commitment to, um, the school system in Caroline County. And that's my comments.
Call for the vote, Ms. Chairman.
I, I'm going to have a little discussion now since we can have discussion. And I, I planned on having some. I didn't know we were going to get run over. But you know there was a caboose bill passed last week, correct, Mr. Black?
I do not.
Well, the caboose bill, according to the fin, the Senior Attorney in Finance and Appropriations, Caroline's portion of that, of the new money for twenty-five will be an additional three million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of state money. Three million, three hundred and fifty thousand. So when the state kicks in that kind of funds, it, it's supposed to relieve the localities who we've been told have been supporting school systems for a decade. We all saw that come out in the governor's report as the, the, the school systems have been on the backs of the localities. Now, I too have sat and talked to Dr. Hubbard many, 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 many times, more than probably any of you talked to your school board members. And, and I do agree that the one area, one of the top areas would be the full-time bus drivers. He and I have had that discussion many times. Bring them on board and getting them insurance. But we can't. We do not make that decision. The school board does. We give them money and, and it is, we, we have no control over who it gets spent on. Mr. Thomas and I have had this discussion before on the very topic of bus drivers. We have sat here more than, more than two or three years in the past, and we're still having, Mr. Thomas, the same discussion about bus drivers. It's three hundred and eighty-five thousand. I don't have a problem giving the school system three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the bus drivers. But I want to see accountability for that. I want to see the accounting for that. I've talked to Dr. Hubbard about that in detail, the accounting for where it gets spent. But we can't dictate that. We, we give money, but they're going to get an additional large sum of money from the state, and you make it sound like we're robbing them when the state's finally picking up their portion of the funding, which was reported throughout all those studies that were done. The state hasn't done that. I, I mean, I think that's a tremendous amount of money.
Mr., Mr. Forehead?
So, Dr. Calverick's coming out. That number is new to me, so I would like to hear that number. She has comment on that?
I do feel it is critical to clarify the caboose bill. The caboose bill is for FY twenty-four, and we have not received any information from the state in relation to the Calc tool. We are to get FY twenty-five on May thirty-first, and the following week, the video we both will be providing a calc tool for the caboose bill, which is associated with FY twenty-four. So there is no three million dollars that we have been made aware of.
It's interesting that Joshua Kaplan, the Senior Attorney for Finance and Appropriations, can answer questions. So I, I think I've got a pretty good idea how much you're going to get.
Well, Mr. Sealy, I'd be happy to speak with him. If you have great insight for three million dollars, we certainly would not be standing here before you, but I will bring our Chief Operations Officer forward, and she can help explain the caboose bill.
If you can't explain it, then there's no need for you to stand there because we're, I'm looking at an email from somebody in Richmond, tell, and you're telling me you don't know the numbers.
And we have an expert that has worked in the K-12 industry for over twenty years, and she is very familiar with the caboose bill because she works with it on a annual basis. So if you would afford her the opportunity to explain the caboose bill, I think it's only appropriate that you make a vote on accurate information.
Miss, um, uh, one of the things is, uh, Mr. Sealy, you had said that you wanted to do the three, extra three eighty-five for the bus drivers. So that would bring up the school appropriation. If you just said that, then that would bring their appropriation up from eight hundred thousand to, uh,
I want that, I want that made with, with the determin, with, and with absolute assurance. As Mrs. Long said last year, she voted for it with the hope that we would see accounting. I'm not saying it wasn't accounted for, but I'm going to tell you, I haven't run into anybody who fell into those categories that claims they got the raise, okay?
Mr. Chairman, before you can do that, you have to take a vote on the original bill, come back. If it fails, then you add the two, two eighty-five. So do it in order.
Yep, okay. That's fine. Let's, let's take a, let's take a vote on the original. Let's take on the orig.
Rest of us get to have discussion.
Are we not able?
That side of the thing.
Are we not able to get more information before we make our vote?
What's that?
I, I'm just wanting more information before we make a vote. Well, I think we're going to, because he wants to, he's right, that we need to reject this, and then we can go with another, we can go with another motion. The way I understand the rules, we're, we're still in discussion.
Right.
Okay? And if part of that discussion is asking for a, a, a subject matter expert to give some data, I don't, that's in line with what we've done in the past, as I recall. And, and, and I have some discussions. As long as we're still discussing the original motion, then, then.
Right, we're okay.
Completely the original motion.
I agree.
Okay, okay, go for it. Mr. Thomas?
Were you done?
I am, I'll defer my time to Mr. Stevens. I would love to know the data.
I, well, then, then, then my discussion point was, and I, I spoke to my school board member too, and another school board member. My point is, just like you said about the caboose bill, we don't know how much was, or I didn't know until Mr. Sealy just said something, what was in there. I would like to be able to see what's in there before we decide what number has to go to the schools. We can't necessarily do that because you got to send your contracts out June one, or they're going out now.
Contracts are already out and signed.
So there's, there's some issue there already since the contracts are out and there's twelve positions unfunded based on this email we got from Dr. Calver.
Well, those positions are not contracted out.
They're not filled in.
Current staff is at a three percent in a step as we had previous.
General Education FTEs, which are teachers, they're, they're, they're funded.
Those new positions are not, are, those new positions, we do not have contracts out for those. We have our current staff out at a three percent in a step increase.
And that's where most of the money, most of the money, though, if you saw her email, most of the money that is the state money is, is going to go towards that. Your, 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 what you're saying is the state money is going to go towards the teacher step and the three percent. Where the additional money is needed, most of the additional money is needed is. Where the additional money is needed, most of the additional money is needed is to make the bus drivers, um, make the bus drivers full-time, those, um, the, yeah, the, plus in addition, the um twelve teachers, which is
Million something.
One, one million. And then the, so that makes up, and then the school safety officers. I I will say this, and I can only, I can only speak.
Go ahead, finish, you can finish, go ahead.
Oh, I I just, the school safety offers, officers in Spalsylvania County, they they do an amazing job. And they take, they take a lot of pressure off, um, the SROs who are there uh, because they can deal with stuff that the, that doesn't need to go to the level. Those are, those are really, really good positions and that's a, that's a safety thing, but.
My, my point was, I'm, I'm totally open to a supplemental appropriation, which is what we do in July all the time. Because their budget's gonna go back to categories and then it comes back to us to approve by category. So I'm perfectly willing to look at what the caboose bill gives them and and see where there's a gap, if there's a gap at all, based on the numbers we heard tonight.
The, I think the problem is waiting that long, though, is, is the problem is, is with your things like your bus drivers and your new teachers, you're not giving them much time. You're not giving them much turnaround time, if we wait till July, we don't meet in July till July, what, when are we meeting in July, July? No, 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 I mean, no, but he's saying this, he's saying the supplemental, when we find out in July.
Well, no, we will know in June.
Right, we'll know thirty May.
And then we, if we have to, we can make, make an additional appropriation in June or like we always do in July when we adjust it. But the reality is, the past three years, the school board has returned five hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand and three hundred thousand.
Correct.
I am not gonna get mad at them if they don't return anything because they put three hundred and eighty-five thousand in for bus drivers right now. They can do that right now, because that's not my call, that's their call. And I'm sitting here saying I'm not gonna be mad at you or do anything if there's an issue with that three hundred and eighty-five thousand.
But we were always mad with them in the past because if they put it towards something, it's an ongoing cost, we would, we would lose our, we would lose our lunch. We would get all upset because they're like, we always told them, if it's towards a capital cost.
That's not me that says that.
The, the majority of this board has told the schools in the past, with your money, you can spend it on, we, the last thing we want, I I wouldn't want them doing it, is them spending extra money that they have left over on an ongoing cost that now, that now is something that we have to fund every year.
But the point is, it's not, the point is, it's not supposed to be left over. Remember the year that I found a million dollars in the instruction budget, because it was left over?
When?
That's, that's what we're talking about. We're gonna take care of the bus drivers and try to take care of the school people. I'm just, I'm the, my vote is gonna be, we look at some additional money if we need to, after the, we know what the caboose bill says.
May I clarify the caboose bill, as Dr. Calverick stated, the caboose, caboose bill is the FY twenty-four bill, um, the budget in which we are ending June thirtieth. Um, so those funds, no matter what, come in, uh, they will be spent by June thirtieth and um come back to the county um, at the end of that fiscal year. The FY twenty-five budget that has come back is showing a two point five million dollar increase in the state funding in which we did provide to you that information on the Friday document that Dr. Calverick shared. The two point five, we're saying from the additional state funding will go towards that um compensation increase that we are providing to the staff of the three percent in the step increase.
I guess for me, what I would like to see is we gave the schools the one point three last year. I would like to see us at least match that this year, and we did a tax increase. We did a tax increase.
Yes, three of you did.
And and, well, well, yes.
Yes, three of you did.
Well, the, the board voted on it, so the board approved it.
Yes, three of you did.
So I would like to see that tax in money go to, to, so that gets you your one point, that, I mean, we, we need to support the schools and give them what they can, I would say that we need to give them at least, at least a million more in new money, additionally what they're asking. And your, your tax increase, by the way, the way you can get there is your tax increase, really, it's three thirty, but it's, you got a one seventy bump. So you're really in the, this year getting five hundred thousand from it. So in actuality, you're, you're, you know, you're looking at, so to get to an, at least an additional million dollars, you're already halfway there with the tax increase.
What happens, what happens if we appropriate another million for the schools? And they get three point five million from the state, what happens then?
Well, then, they, the schools, well, it makes us, it makes us look good, because no, because actually, we might actually be funding schools over, over public safety for, for once.
I look in the mirror every day, I don't look good anymore, so. What, what, what happens, that's, that's the reality.
The reality is, we can't rely on, just because the state has been underfunding, just because the state has been underfunding our school system for a long time, we know that with J-Lar studies.
I'm asking about process, Mister Black.
Doesn't give us a right, doesn't give us a right to say, hey, we're gonna cut the schools.
I'm not, nobody's cutting schools, I'm asking about process and I don't know.
That would be up to them, that's, that would be up to them.
Right, we didn't cut schools though.
That would be, that would be up to them.
Right.
I think a fair conversation associated the, with the what-ifs of the caboose bill, which sounds like there needs to be some additional uh education, uh maybe both boards sides, would be that should this money come in and it be applicable to FY twenty-five, not solely FY twenty-four, and it was of the amount that Mister Sealy indicated and you've already appropriated, then we would come to the table and have an agreement that at the end of the year, like we have in the past, we would put that in reserve and it would come back to your general fund. We have done that specifically, I think Mister Sealy, it was an idea that you suggested as we were trying to do step one of the salary study. Might have been associated with about five hundred thousand dollars and we fronted the money, but then we held it at the end, et cetera. So we've done different tactics of that nature.
That got shot down, we didn't do that, that wasn't a good idea for you guys, we gave you all the money upfront, we gave you
No, sir, that is not what happened.
We gave you six seventy-two for the year before and six seventy-two for the next year.
It was two eighty and.
Two eighty came back to us.
The two eighty came back, not, we, we did it, not the way, not the way it was exactly presented.
Back resting very quickly. Where, if, if we want to give additional money and and we have additional, then like I said, what you, from my perspective.
We're still having a discussion, yes.
From, from my perspective, you have the ability to give money once we have ending numbers and final numbers. You have that ability. But there is a motion and a second.
Okay.
You go, you're gonna have to, I'll call for the question, you have to go ahead and either vote it up or vote it down, come up with a new motion, and then we can move forward
Thing of it is.
with the discussion about how to either put a new motion on the floor or how, what, what would be the plan if.
And that's wonderful.
Can I finish, please? If everything remains true about schools getting additional money from state, we say, okay, this is what we're going to do and this is, should be their expectation, I'm hoping. But we're, we're doing a lot of hypotheticals and that's not gonna get us anywhere, what we do know is that within our budget, we had eight thirty-four additional uh funding to the schools per the budget. And that's what, and that's what I voted on, the budget, Mister Thompson says, let's do this and let's take a look at it. But we've got to start somewhere. And the place to start right now, and the only place we can start, because there, Rob rules of words, that there is a motion and a second on the floor that we have to entertain and handle.
That is correct, and we are still in discussion.
And the point, Mister Underwood.
We are still in discussion, that's what, all this is a discussion, so let's, we're not talking about something that's not schools.
The point we never discuss is budget versus actual. We never look at the actual number, we're just increasing budget over budget. So they really didn't get eight hundred thousand, they really got one point one, because there was three hundred in their budget that they didn't spend last year. You, you understand, if I send you to the grocery store with a hundred dollars and and the groceries are ninety and the next week you go back and say, I need a hundred and ten, you're really asking for a twenty dollar increase, not a ten dollar increase? Because it's budget versus actual.
I, I understand that.
You're just doing budget over budget.
Yep.
Which is not the way any business would run.
And do we do that for any of other departments?
I'm just telling you, that's the process which is wrong, for everybody.
So why don't we treat our, all of our departments?
For everybody.
But we don't do that, we're talking about one particular, we're talking about one particular. Yes, so, uh, no, it's not, it is a discussion that we're having. It's, it's embarrassing to you, but it's, it's a discussion that has to be had.
No.
I do think it is important to talk about reversion funds, when three hundred thousand dollars comes back, that's less than one percent
Exactly.
of our budget, which is very fiscally savvy.
It's a great job.
And we are proud to be able to return that to you, that we have not been wasteful stewards of the funds and work with you to, to do capital improvements that are one time, so we just want to make sure that that's clear and again, if we do have those monies, we will do that same rightful process.
We, and 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 I'm gonna say, and I've said to you, we appreciate you being good stewards. The reality, though, is if you return three hundred thousand and we give you an increase over the budget, that three hundred thousand should be included in the increase, or at least considered.
Our budget process is not rolling our budget over from year to year, we completely do a new budget from scratch with our people that are currently employed, with their current benefits, with the current rates and the pay scales.
Tell me about your transportation numbers, if you want to talk budget, why did they go sky high last year and gas prices went down?
They continue to go high because of the usage and the double backing that we're doing with our, with our staff.
Which was different than what it was before. Call a question, Mister Chairman.
And overtime.
You know, everybody's had a comment except Mister Forehand and and I, so.
Yes, they, they have, they have questions, they would like to.
Well, as part of the discussion, um two things, I, I, I wouldn't have recommended a one cent tax increase, my, my thoughts on recommending that was that, that sum go to the schools. That was with the assumption that they were gonna get about two million extra dollars from this, from the state. If that number is three point five, then that will, that affects my decision, okay? If it's two point five, then that would affect my decision. So I really want to know that number when it's available. I know it's not available, it's not clear right now. The other part of that is, I have no, I have no qualms with how they're budgeting, because they're getting about seventy million dollars and they're reverting back three hundred, five hundred thousand dollars, we're talking about
Pennies.
A tenth of one percent, all right, no one's household is run that well.
That close.
Okay, a tenth of one percent, that's great. I got no problems with that, so, thank you. So man, that, those are my, my two things, that, that, I really want to know the number, because it would but my, my intent on the suggesting the one, one cent tax increase in the first place was to supplement the one hundred and thirty-four thousand that we have that was currently budgeted uh for them.
And and I, I agree with you wholeheartedly.
This is long.
Step on the tax increase, though.
This is long.
Yeah, couple of things, one, um first of all, I, I just want to clarify, this doesn't have anything with school, um, fire, rescue. You're right, we have spent money with fire and rescue, but you cannot compare school with fire and rescue, fire and rescue is seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day and we are a big county and they have a job to do and that is to keep our citizens safe
Absolutely.
to the best of their ability, so, yes, we have invested. Fire truck costs half a million dollars, you know, it, it adds up, so I just want anyone who listened to that comparison to understand you cannot compare apples and oranges, they're, 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 they're two different things, so uh, I certainly support uh fire, rescue as, as well as our sheriff's department and we have our schools and our kids are our greatest treasured source, but you can only take that dollar bill and divide it up so, but so much. Uh, and one thing I do think is worth investing in in this budget and in, and maybe they're doing it in the budget they are working on, I would, I see the practicality business-wise of taking the money needed to make the bus drivers full-time because if not, last year they were paying overtime for those same bus drivers. And at the same time, we're investing in our citizens because they'll have benefits. That is one thing in this budget that I really want to have happen, and if we have to do that as a separate funding in a motion, I would move that we modify the motion, if we can make it a condition or if we just wait until June and we find out the number. How soon, do, do we have to approve the budget tonight or can we wait until our next meeting?
They have to, they're number by July one, you mean? They have, you, one July, one July. Well, they've already sent their contracts out.
But they have more contracts, I'm sure.
Right.
So.
Doctor Calverick, what is the latest date that we can approve a budget that allows you to, excuse me, do the additional monies for the three eighty for the bus drivers for benefits?
Specific to your question, the bus drivers, we can convert them
Anytime.
at any point.
Thank you.
It's the other positions that are more critical, because we need to know that, A, we have the FTE, then we have to post the position and we have to find a suitable candidate. So those are more time sensitive, such as the Lewis and Clark growth positions, the CMS three positions that are S R funded that will expire, that will leave us with large class sizes. Those are the positions that have a time portion associated with them. In terms of budget approval, Code of Virginia states May fifteenth. However, of course, when the General Assembly does not abide by that Code of Virginia, um, I think that goes by the wayside, but within thirty days of your adoption, we must adopt a budget. Um, but May fifteenth is what Code of Virginia states for localities.
Just, just to clarify, the May, the May fifteenth date is by statute for approval of a school budget or thirty days after the state gives an estimate?
Yes.
Sorry, May fifteenth is the statutory date for approval of a school budget or thirty days after the state gives the estimate of funds for the next fiscal year. Uh, the, the county has to approve its budget before July one.
Thirty days, thirty days from yesterday? Yeah, or thirty days from now or thirty days from Friday or? But they're still, we didn't know nothing.
Right, the, the, if the estimate has not been provided for FY twenty-five yet, specific to Caroline County, then I would say that thirty days hasn't, hasn't been triggered.
Thank you.
We can amend the budget anytime.
All right, so there's been a motion and a second and a lot of discussion. Motion was, Mister Underwood?
I made a motion to adopt the um FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget as amended by Stat.
And Mister Sealy seconded?
I seconded it.
So we have a motion and a second, we've had plenty of discussion, um all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay, the, uh, division in the House, Mister Underwood?
Aye.
Mister Sealy?
Aye.
Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Um, Mister Thomas?
Aye.
And Mister Forehand?
Aye.
And I vote nay, so the motion carries, uh, motion carries five to one. So um with that, we will move on to item number.
Before you leave, Mister Chairman, we need to restate the fact that, again, the board has said
We will.
figure out what the state is providing, we will make adjustments to the budget.
Yes, we will, we will make adjustments to the uh, to the budget and um at our uh June eighteenth meeting, I guess. All right, um, item number twelve? Oh, the eleven is the CIP, yes.
Chairman Black, members of the board, before you, you have the adoption and approval of the CIP plan as presented um at our last meeting, um, there have been no discussion of any changes.
All right, does anyone have any questions? If not, I will take a motion.
Then that we adopt the fiscal twenty-five, twenty-nine capital improvement plan.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, all right, we are on to item number twelve, which is the, um, sorry, um informational calendar items.
Just clarification on the motion on the amended budget, did that? Just clarification on the motion on the, uh, amended budget, did that include the verbal amendments?
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct, with the amendments that staff discussed at the podium.
32,000 for staff and chief discussed.
Yep, just wanted to clarify.
Right, thank you. Wow, Chris doesn't do that.
Okay, so who's upper calendar items?
State, county fair, county fair, my favorite time.
Oh, yeah, gotta mention that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have a summary on the status of, uh, general fund school and utility capital projects in your, in your packet. Uh, with regard to calendar items, as Mrs. Long just mentioned, the Caroline County Agricultural Fair, uh, opens on Wednesday, June the 12th and runs through Saturday, June 15th. On Saturday, June 15th, there will also be a Juneteenth celebration at the, uh, county park, uh, behind the high school and across from the middle school. Uh, June 18th, there will be a retirement celebration for, for Kevin Whiteman, uh, beginning at 4:30. And remember, the, uh, the, the June board meeting is the 18th, not the 11th, beginning at 6:00 PM. And finally, county offices will be closed on Wednesday, June 19th and observance of Juneteenth. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was distracted. We did have the retirement for Kevin Whiteman on the.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Uh, June, June 18th at 4:30, I believe.
Okay, at the community center?
Uh, I think it.
Oh, we still decide? Okay. You'll see.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I have one motion that we've gotta clarify coming out of closed session.
Okay.
Um, I make a motion, a resolution authorizing negotiation and bona fide effort to purchase real property for public purposes as discussed in closed session be, uh, made, discussed, adopted.
Let's not be screaming. You all have a copy of what was discussed in closed meeting. The resolution that, uh, is the subject of the motion is that resolution.
So, wait a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion on, that was a motion by Mr. Sealy, second by Mrs. Long. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, uh, our next, so we are, I need a motion to, uh,
Move to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
How about closing board comments?
Oh, I forgot about, yeah, that's closing board comments, I'm sorry. Closing board comments. I said I'll pass on anything. Okay, I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
I have one, Mr. Chairman. There, there was a comment made that I said at a constituent meeting that I didn't re, represent my constituents, which is an absolute lie. What I said was, the role of this board is to represent all districts. We make decisions based on all, what's best for the county as a whole. There are, sometimes we look at issues within our district, and sometimes those things may not be it. People in our district may not approve, but it's what's best for the county. We have an obligation as the six of us to represent all of the boardmen, all of the citizens of Caroline County, not just the ones in our district. And that's by General Assembly. We are representatives of that district, but our goal is to make Caroline County the absolute best. And there are times when you're gonna make a decision that people in your district may not agree with, but it's best for the county. And we've done that on, on solar, we've done it on many things. So that was my comment, and the fact that I don't represent the district is absolutely ludicrous and level of ignorance that's.
Okay, I, um, I will close with, um, I, I really hope this board takes into serious consideration, um, appropriating the schools more money at, um, when we have more information. I, um, what I meant by making us look good, I don't think it makes us look good when we are the only county that is spending more on public safety than we are on public education. And whether you compare apples to apples or orange to oranges, it, it's just, public education has way more employees. Um, and, uh, public safety is really, really important, and you're never gonna hear anything that I, that I disagree with that at all. So, um, I would really, really, really like for us to take a look at that, so that's all. Uh, motion to, we, we have the motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? Second, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we are adjourned.